We call this meeting to order. The invocation is going to be done today by Tim Blevins from Life Church. Everybody, stand.
Well, it's an honor to be here today on such a significant day. We're going to need prayer as you head into this morning. So, Father, we thank you that we are gathered here, and I'm grateful that our commissioners will take this day and open with prayer before our business meetings. And today, we recognize that this is the day that the Lord has made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. I pray for our commissioners to make decisions with godly wisdom and align our county under biblical principles of righteousness, stewardship, leadership, and fairness for all. And I pray for the commissioners to be led by your Spirit as they make important decisions that affect all of us as residents. And, God, I pray that you would bless New Hanover County and its leaders, its employees, and all those who make this county great. And I declare by faith that the best is yet to come for our county. I pray this all in the wonderful name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag.
(inaudible) United States of America, in this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we move to the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to take off?
Move the consent agenda.
Chair, thank you. I'd like to pull number five for just a quick clarification and announcement. Number five is the adoption of the resolution to dispose of surplus property according to procedures outlined in North Carolina General Statute 160A, Article 12. Just pulled this, as I did at the agenda briefing, to tell those people here today, because there are a lot, and I know that we have a lot of nonprofits that are here. Please draw your attention to this. This is what we do, I believe, twice a year, that the county gets and disposes of their surplus property. And this time, there is some extremely interesting items that are there. Nonprofits will have a chance to view these things first and to get their bids in first. We have, count them, fifty-nine vehicles, fifty-nine vehicles, coming from the various departments of our county. Now, they're all used, there's no doubt about it, but some of them have as low as, I think I saw one with a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it, and some with many more. But I think that there's incredible deals that are out there. We also have computer equipment. We have lawn maintenance equipment. We have three gators. If you have to ask what a gator is, then you probably are not interested in it. So, I'm telling you to please pause. You can go to the county website and view all of these. I won't go into any more detail, but if you are, again, an organization or nonprofit that needs any of these, this kind of equipment, now is your chance. There are some tremendous deals. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That's all I want to do. Sarah, I didn't need any more. Thank you for being there. And with that, I'll move to move the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's passed. Next is presentation of service awards and introduction of new employees.
Commissioner, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize some really outstanding men and women who work on behalf of New Hanover County. We have no retirees today. I'm happy to announce that, and so your moratorium on retirement has taken effect. Glad you appreciate that as a joke. We're going to recognize folks that have five years, ten years, twenty years, and twenty-five years of service this morning. These are the folks that do the work that keeps our organization moving well, day in and day out. They're the ones who understand your policy direction, have the talent and the skill, and you give them the resources to do the work on behalf of our community. So, it's an honor to recognize folks that have reached a significant milestone. And so, we begin this morning with a couple of folks that are reaching the five-year milestone. When I call your name, if you would, please come forward. I'd like to be the first to shake your hand. Thank you for what you do, and then invite you to visit with the award and also have your picture made. So, first this morning with a five-year award, Dylan Newsom, Unity Justice Services. Dylan, thank you for what you do. Also, with five years of service this morning, we're going to recognize Susan Rivenbark with the New Hanover County Sheriff's Office. Rivenbark, congratulations. Thank you for what you do. We're going to move forward to ten years of outstanding service. First person we're going to recognize this morning for a ten-year service award is Paige Brooks, Information Technology. Paige, congratulations, and thank you for what you do. Also, with ten years of outstanding service, we're going to recognize Owen Howe, Health and Human Services, Health Department. Congratulations, Owen. Thank you for what you do. We're going to move forward to ten years of service to New Hanover County. This is really starting to get into rare air. And so, the first person that we're going to recognize this morning with twenty years of service is Mary Kleinfeldt in our Public Library. Mary, thank you. Also, with twenty years of service to New Hanover County, Health and Human Services, the Department of Social Services, Stephanie McGrew. Stephanie, congratulations, and thank you for it. We have a third person this morning to recognize with twenty years of service, also in Health and Human Services, the Department of Social Services, Charlene Zorn. Charlene, congratulations, and thank you. Commissioners, we've got one person to recognize this morning with twenty-five years of service. This is even rarer air when we have someone who makes that kind of commitment to our community and our organization. Health and Human Services Administration, Gary Martin. Gary, congratulations, and thank you for what you do. Outstanding folks. I wish you'd lead us in another round of applause to recognize them for what they do for our community. We have some new folks that have joined the team since the board was last together, and so I'm happy for you to join the team. What we want to do is recognize you, give you a warm welcome to the county, and ask you to aspire to follow in the footsteps of the folks that you've seen here today. Most importantly, you were hired into this organization because you're passionate about public service. You know you're smart and bright. We attract deep applicant pools with smart, bright, talented folks. But the differentiator is to be successful, and to be brought on to the theme is to have a passion for public service. And that is what you presented to the folks that asked you to join the team. So, thank you for that, and we want to recognize you for joining the team. And so, when I call your name, please stand up so that we can welcome you. First, this morning, from Health and Human Services, the Department of Social Services, Reagan Conley. Reagan, thank you for coming to work with us. In the New Hanover County Sheriff's Office, Sabrina Cooper. Sabrina, thank you for joining the team. Health and Human Services, in the Department of Social Services, Kelsey Faden. Kelsey, thank you. In our Tax Office, Ella Floyd. Ella, thank you for joining the team. Health and Human Services, the Department of Social Services, Anna Heiza. Anna, thank you for joining us. In the Finance Office, our new Budget Officer, Amanda Kustuzaki. Azak! I'm close. Amanda, thank you for coming to work with us. Also, in the Department of Health and Human Services, Social Services, Victoria Kushner. Victoria, thank you for coming to work with us. Department of Social Services, within Health and Human Services, Fallon Murfree. Fallon, thank you for joining the team. Also, in the Department of Social Services, Christina Restivo. Christina, thank you for coming to work with us. As a member of the Northeast Library, Sarah Slay. Sarah, thank you for coming to work with us. In Health and Human Services, in centralized support, Tia Smith. Tia, thank you for coming to work with us. So, Commissioners, that concludes employee recognition and new hires. So thankful for the folks that have been with us and really grateful for the ones that have decided to join. Thank you for letting us do this work.
Next is consideration of Men's Health Month proclamation.
A call to Napoleon Cowell Hillbritton. For me, this proclamation is pretty significant, recognizing that we, as men, often don't take as good of care of ourselves as we ought to. Last year, in the month of March, one of my board members, Deb Hayes, passed away, and I've been getting messages prior to that, but for me, it was a wake-up call to take care of myself. So, last April, I started a journey of working out, eating better, getting better rest, and through the course of that, I was able to lose about seventy pounds. And I feel the whole world different, and the importance of recognizing that health, many people say, is wealth. My doctor kept telling me, Jonathan, the older you get, the worse your quality of health is going to be if you don't take care of yourself. And now, everything is looking bright and sunny, and so, it's important that the Board of Health recognizes Men's Health Month, or the Commissioners recognize Men's Health Month, and that we encourage all men to take care of themselves. I'll read this proclamation. I would kind of welcome Commissioners' Men's Health Month proclamation. Whereas, Hanover County Strategic Plan sets forth a goal for every resident to have access to services that support their physical health and mental well-being with physical activity and focus on self-care and regular medical checkups as components of achieving these targets. And whereas, educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems can help to reduce the rates of mortality from disease. And whereas, men who are educated about the value of preventative health and prolonging their lifespan and supporting their role as productive family members are more likely to participate in the health screenings. And whereas, men who maintain healthy lifestyles are role models for children and well-equipped to care for a happy and a healthy family. And whereas, Men's Health Month will focus on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, mental health, diabetes, prostate, testicular, and colon cancers. And whereas, heart disease and cancer are at the top of two causes of death among North Carolina men. And whereas, seventy percent of North Carolina men who are overweight or obese, and half of North Carolina men are living with at least one chronic disease. And whereas, Men's Health Month is an opportunity to raise awareness, advocate resources, and promote access to education about men's health. Now, therefore, we proclaim by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that June will be recognized as Men's Health Month, and New Hanover County adopted it on the seventeenth day of June. Mr. Chair, I move the proclamation as presented and read. And I'll leave way for once the votes taken for Mr. Cowell Hillbritton to run, to speak to us.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Kyle Hillbrun, and I'm the epidemiologist for the Health Department. Thank you for your consideration of the Men's Health Month proclamation. Men's Health Month is a nationally recognized period for awareness, prevention, education, and family engagement for the health and well-being of men and boys. Men are less likely to seek medical care, more likely to have preventable risk factors such as excess drinking and alcoholism, tobacco use, diabetes, and hypertension. In New Hanover County in particular, the death rate from heart disease for men is nearly double the rate for women. This is an important opportunity to acknowledge preventable risk factors and promote health behaviors for men and boys in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a move to approve the proclamation as read.
Make it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's take a photo, Kyle.
Okay, next is public hearing and consideration of resolution for the 2024 Unlimited Obligation Bonds on Project on Proposed Not to Exceed Thirty-seven Million, Five Hundred Thousand installment financing of capital projects. Mr. Cradle.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
At the last board meeting on June the third, you all adopted a resolution authorizing county staff to proceed with a debt offering in an amount not to exceed thirty-seven point five million in order to finance the items listed on this slide, including the North Chase Library, the Castle Hain and Gordon Road fire stations, two buildings at the sheriff's firing range, and a roof replacement at the Senior Resource Center. The estimated cost for these projects is thirty-six million, one hundred and fifty thousand, six sixty-three. The not-to-exceed amount of thirty-seven point five million allows for debt issuance cost and cushion for potential project cost increases. This agenda item today is to hold the statutorily required public hearing that was published on June the sixth, and for you all to consider adopting the resolution that was included in the agenda package. If approved, staff will submit the LGC application for this debt in early July with the intent of it being approved at their meeting to be held on August the sixth, and the bond sale to be held on August twenty-eighth. That concludes the review of this public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Eric, this is something that's been published previously. We're not talking about anything new today.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Make a motion.
On June the third, two thousand twenty-four, the Board of County Commissioners adopted a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of New Hanover, North Carolina, authorizing the negotiation of an amendment to an installment financing contract directing the publication of notice with respect thereto, declaring the intent of the county to reimburse itself for capital expenditures from proceeds thereof and providing for certain other related matters thereto. The board determined that it is in the best interest of the county to finance the construction of North Chase Public Library, construction of Gordon Road Fire Station, construction of Castle Hain Fire Station, the construction of an ammunition warehouse, and other classroom building at the New Hanover County Firing Range, and roof replacement and exterior improvements to the Senior Resource Center. The board must now conduct a public hearing concerning the installment financing contract and the proposed two thousand twenty-four projects and any other transactions contemplated therein and associated therewith. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No one wants to speak on the public hearing? Is there a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of New Hanover, North Carolina approving installment financing contract and delivery thereof and providing for certain other related matters? To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fourteen is public hearing appropriations and expenditures for economic development and economic incentive agreements. Mr. Cradle.
As part of the recommended budget, county management included funding appropriations for various economic agencies and organizations, and the budget also included funds to meet the terms of economic incentive agreements that have been previously approved by the board. The economic agencies and companies with incentive agreements are shown on this slide along with the amounts that were budgeted in the county's general fund for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five recommended budget. General statutes require a public hearing to be held related to these budgeted expenditures. Notice of today's public hearing was published on June the sixth.
Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one fifty-eight point seven point one, the board is required to hold a public hearing to receive comments on appropriations and expenditures for economic development. The source of funding for these appropriations and expenditures will be from the general fund. The purposes of economic development and economic incentive agreements are to increase the population, taxable property, agricultural industries, employment, industrial output, or business prospects for New Hanover County. Economic development expenditures have been recommended for appropriations for year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The public is invited to comment on the following appropriations and expenditures as shown on the screen. Economic development agencies, organizations, previously approved contractual incentive payments. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to provide their remarks. Does anyone have anything to say? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
(inaudible).
I'm sorry, Natalie. I'm so sorry.
Good afternoon or good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm sorry to slow things down a little bit. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for your continued partnership with the Greater Wilmington Chamber of Commerce in small business development and retention and expansion. And Josh Howlingsey on my team has been doing a great job over the last three years. We can count hundreds of jobs and a couple million dollars in investment that they don't hit the headlines. Most of that is existing businesses that he's gone out and met with and identified ways he can help them overcome some of the challenges they have to growing their business and continuing to employ more people in our community. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I believe that's the only person that signed up, so... I'm sorry.
I did sign up. Good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you, Commissioners. My name is Liz Scanlon. I'm with the Wilmington Symphony. I've been in Wilmington for five years, and I moved here from Boston, Massachusetts. And if you know anything about Boston, you know that their biggest economic driver is their Fourth of July Boston Pops concert. And I am here today to talk about increasing your funding that you've given to the symphony for its Fourth of July concert. Currently, you have earmarked thirteen thousand dollars for the orchestra, and we thank you very much for that. The cost of this concert, however, far exceeds that. When I moved here, I thought we should have a Pops concert, and as soon as Live Oak Bank opened, Pavilion opened, I worked with the city to make sure that there was a free Fourth of July concert. It cost the symphony about seventy thousand dollars to run this. We run, we get twenty thousand dollars from the city. Last year, you gave us twenty thousand. We assume the rest of that cost. We think it's really important, not only is it an economic driver, but it's something for our community, our culturally rich community. And I think it's important that families be able to attend a Fourth of July concert for free at a location that is typically, you know, you have to buy a ticket for fifty to a hundred dollars. This is free for the community. And if you look back at the Boston Pops, it started as ten thousand people on a lawn. It is now a billion-dollar event. I'm hoping that we can get there someday. We're in our third year, but it will be an economic driver. People want to come to the symphony, and it's also important that we have this and provide this for our residents. I hope you will consider matching what you gave us last year, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good morning. I'm Dan Brawley. I'm the executive director of the Cuculoros Film Foundation. I appreciate your time. I'm here today to request that the county maintain the funding for Cuculoros at twenty-eight thousand dollars this year. We're celebrating our thirtieth anniversary. Hard to believe, in nineteen ninety-four, the very first film festival was held downtown, a very different place thirty years ago. I know you all know the economic value of organizations like Cuculoros, but I'll give you just a couple of pieces of data. In two thousand twenty-three, we held a hundred and sixty-nine separately ticketed events in Wilmington, bringing visitors to New Hanover County from over two hundred and fifty different zip codes around the country. People who stayed in hotels, visited our restaurants and our stores. We hope that you'll recognize that great investment. Every dollar that you invest in Cuculoros is matched twenty-five times by local businesses, by private donors, and by foundations. And so, anybody who runs a business knows that's a pretty good return on investment. So, thank you for your time. I really appreciate the work that you do, and we hope that you will continue funding Cuculoros at the twenty-eight thousand dollar level this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, good morning. My name is Gerard Newkirk. I'm the CEO of Genesis Block. This proposal focuses on the sustainability of the partnership between Genesis Block and New Hanover County to support the development of local founders, entrepreneurs, minority businesses owners, and drive economic development. Genesis Block has an objective to continue providing comprehensive solutions for economic development in New Hanover County with a focus on minority owned firms, community entrepreneurs, and developing in business underserved business networks. Our plans are to continue expanding this inclusive business network that provides the ecosystem that minority owned businesses need to strengthen their ventures. I just want to add a few highlights just to demonstrate some of the impact that we've had from our entrepreneurial services. We've had eight cohorts, over fifty companies have received entrepreneurial services since two thousand twenty two. We've, our companies have accounted for almost six mil, sixteen million dollars in economic activity since two thousand twenty one. We launched Block Eats, which is a food hall incubator in partnership with Cape Fear Community College to foster culinary talent and cultivate entrepreneurship. Block Eats also activated a food desert in northern New Hanover County. Since its opening September nineteenth, we served over nine thousand five hundred meals for students, faculty, and community members. And we're also going to be opening now a new concept called Block Kitchens by four oh eight North Third Street, which is going to provide even more entrepreneurs' food production capacity and a legal platform in order to produce their goods. And we've also established with Cape Fear Community Workforce Development a line cook service program, which was launched in August of two thousand twenty four. A few more regional state projects include conversations to contracts for M U D Week. We've partnered with North Carolina Department of Transportation for a ready, willing, enabled database based on the software platform that we just completed. And we're still, and we've also launched a digital academy for Genesis Block Academy. So now we can service not only people here locally, we can, we have another platform, excuse me, as far as virtual connection. So, we have really three focus areas over the next three years. Block Eats is the only food hall incubator in southeastern North Carolina. And so, with, according to the North Carolina Visitors Center, food generated over three hundred and twenty three million dollars in revenue from foods, from restaurants, from diners, from food trucks, and we provide the only food incubator to support that. As I stated earlier, we just completed our software platform, which connects minority owned businesses to broader contracting opportunities, and our digital academy for entrepreneurial services is completed as well. So, Genesis Block is requesting a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in partnership with New Hanover County to continue to support the operational needs of these three brands, and we'd like to thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Mr. Cradle, would you like to speak? Well, if the audience can't speak, do I open it up to them? You go on to lead.
Good morning. My name is Brenda Dixon, and I'm the founder of Get That Deed, an educational platform here in our area where we helped to create first time homeowners. In two thousand twenty one, I participated in Genesis Block Business Accelerator. They helped me to put structure behind my passion with this initiative. I went out into the community, and I was saying that eighteen months or less she could become a homeowner, and I'll show you how. But Genesis Block helped me to identify that I was an educational platform. They helped me with, to identify my unique proposition, helped me to identify key components of my business, they helped me to find home, my message. Genesis Block was a bridge to me to access different connections with business leaders and other resources. They helped me to connect with a film company that took the story of how home ownership was being restored in the Wilmington area nationwide. Also, in a competition, a shark tank competition that they had, they gave me a C suite of mentors that helped me in my business that was invaluable. With Genesis Block helping me to structure, I crossed over into helping a hundred families to gain first time home ownership here in the Cape Fear region, and we are still a hundred and sixty five families in county. Not only did they help me, but they also helped my daughter, who has a low sodium spice company, help her to get into Lowe's, Mad Lowe's grocery stores, Novak gift shop, and also ongoing, now in the next thirty days, she's going to be launching on a nationwide Big Box website, all because of the help that we got from Genesis Block. So, Genesis Block is very important to our community. They help businesses, our businesses, to grow, to hire employees, and to scale. They have all of our businesses who looking for a hand up and not a handout. So, I am in support of you continuing to give Genesis Block the funding that they need to be impactful in our community. And also, while I'm here, let me also say that I support City United, and that they have done a great work in our community, and if they are not funded, our whole community will feel it. Thank you.
Dr. Faust, would you like to speak?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Well, this.
Mr. Chair, I think that we're at the stage where we can make a motion to close the public hearing in relation to the economic and economic development incentives for the coming year.
Was that a motion?
It is.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number fifteen is a presentation of New Hanover County Non-A, Non-County Agency Funding Committee Recommendations in Public Hearing on the Fiscal Year Twenty Four, Twenty Five Recommended Budget. Mr. Cradle.
Thank you. As you just noted, this is, this agenda item is to hear a presentation from the Non-County Agency Committee and to hold a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five budget. First, as part of the budget process, a committee of, a committee of community volunteers reviews funding requests from not-for-profit agencies that provide services that advance the goals of the county. Members of our budget team provide support to this committee, including Gwen Hill, who has led this effort for many years. This committee spends many hours analyzing the agency requests, both in meetings that they hold together and in their own personal time, and we thank them for their efforts. Randy Reeves, one of the committee members, is here this morning to share their process and their funding recommendations for fiscal year twenty five.
Good morning.
Candy. I'm Randy Reeves, and we have Candy Robbins as well from our committee. And is Claire here? There's Claire. Thank you. So, our committee members have currently five of us onboard. I think there's room for a couple more. The terms expiring are listed. I myself am rolling off. I've been on the committee for, this is my sixth year. So, part of, part of the process of grant applications from all the nonprofit agencies come through our esteemed Gwen Hill, and Scott Stein Hilber as well is on the staff that helps us sift through all of these. We have, in the past, modified our applications based on the key learnings from these different nonprofits that we survey post-application. We've provided training to those agencies, both on the application and the process, and as I mentioned, we survey them to find out what we could do better. We do take in account board comments from the past, specifically last year. The board commented that allocation of funds should begin at a hundred percent and not ninety, so we have made that course correction. We were asked to consider the small, the needs of smaller organizations, which we have done. So, think of the agency that's only got four people versus four hundred and fifty people. And finally, we were told if we asked for more funding, if we deemed it appropriate, we should do that, and we have done that this year. Our process is to review all these applications. This year, we had seventy, which is a record number. Normally, we've seen about forty in the past. So, if you're thinking about the budget, it's probably twice as much asked as before. We review the agency's mid-year performance reports and funding history from those who have been given money before. We have a scoring rubric to help us determine how to rank these organizations for the limited funds we have, and we discuss that individually. Then each of the members individually scores each and every one of these applications, and then provides specific questions back to the agencies. So, we go through it in detail and ask those questions back. We get the question responses, and then we do a final aggregate. Scott Stein Hilber puts a giant scatter plot up on the wall with everything there to see, and we can see how everybody ranks relative to the quantitative and then the subjective committee members. We then have a very constructive discussion, I would say healthy debate, to determine how we're going to allocate. The actual scoring rubric parallels what the county's wishes are from their mission statement and when you look at the strategic plan. So, we want to align with the county's strategy and goals. We want to make sure that the request is aligned with that specific agency's mission, and that it aligns with their agency capability. In other words, they're not taking on something new they've never done before. Just a side note, you have to have been a nonprofit for three years to even, to be eligible for an application. There's a look at collaborative efforts associated with programs and services around the county, other agencies that blend together, and then how's the impact of that program from a multiplication standpoint? Do we get more bang for the buck when we fund them? Demonstrated or potential impact of the program? In other words, what's the outcome? What's the metrics? You know, are we indeed reaching out and providing more support and service to the, to the community? And then the degree, the aug, the degree the augments or fills a New Hanover County gap in, in service that's not already in place. The evaluation process scores those programs individually. We aggregate that. We talk about areas of difference in scoring and key drivers. So, if, if Claire ranked it higher than me, we would talk about that and say, what am I missing? And then we've probably put in well over a hundred hours. I'd say that number's low. The objective rating for the instrument in the rubric is to go through those seven pre-identified criteria, rank each of them on a four-point scale, and then we equally weight them. So, there's seven areas, times four is twenty eight. Then there's the objective side of things. This is where we read between the, the fine print of the, of the agency application and give a rating that allows us individually to rank and capture any other attributes. Perhaps we know the agency, someone on the committee. I, I would virtually say probably ninety-five percent of the applications, somebody knew them. So, it's, it's, it's a real well-rounded committee. And then we score that on a four-point basis. So, what do we fund? Well, we like organizations that deliver a specific program or service. We look at supplies, tools, contracted services if necessary, and other materials for the staff to deliver those programs. And then we will fund salaries for staff directly providing direct support services to the clients that are out there in the community. What the committee in the past has not funded is intermediaries or pass-through, where we give money to somebody that then gives it to somebody else. Marketing dollars, it's really not necessarily a, a delivery of the program to the client, and capital expenditures. And when I say existing buildings and existing vehicles, if you're, if you're a new one, small one, and we need a van to deliver to the food desert or a mobile food, that's capital expense we would fund. And administrative salaries and administrative overhead not generally fund it, but remember my precursor on looking at small organizations. We know an organization for, they don't have a salary, the service doesn't happen. So, examples of things we don't do are utilities, audit expenses, rent, advertising. So, this is the hundred percent tier. I'm not going to read through each and every one of them, but they're in your package. It goes through all of those that we gave a hundred percent, and when you see the eligible funding column, the, the middle column there, that's where we've carved out some of those items I mentioned a moment ago. Then we came up this year with multiple tiers, a hundred, then we went down to ninety. Then we dropped to eighty. Quite a few of those. You could see one that got zero. That was a duplicate program, so they'd already requested the fifty thousand, and they were Quite a few at eighty. Then seventy, then sixty. And there's where the, the totals are. The requested funding was close to two point nine million, eligible is two point eight, and we recommended two point four. So, our next steps, as I mentioned earlier, is we'd like to review what we did after the awards are given. I like to call this continuous improvement. We try to get better continually. We will modify any agency applications based on key learnings if we get feedback that it didn't make sense in a particular place. And also during our committee meetings, we talk extensively on how could we ask the questions better? We'll review that scoring, consider changes to our evaluation criteria, and continue training for non-county agencies on the application process and in-year reporting. Again, that's a lot to applaud Gwen, who gets a service award from me. And set due dates and calendar for the twenty six, the twenty twenty six process. So, with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions the Commissioners might have.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Randy, Claire, Candy, I thank you so much for the work that you've done once again this year. Randy, I really want to thank you. The first part of your remarks, I thought were spectacular, actually, all your remarks were. But the fact that you, you heard what we've said over the years, I believe you've been with this committee since the beginning.
Correct.
There, and I, I know there's been some, some back and forth. I think your one hundred hours is a very conservative figure, amount of time that you put in. I know that you put in a lot, and I, I really thank you. And all the comments you made about, you know, lifting or taking a full look at what is being requested, I greatly appreciate. We are in a tough budget year this year, but before I get there, I'd, I'd like to make a comment. There's a, something that came up last year we focused on, but I noted in your, I love the way you have the evaluation, fund this, not that. One of the issues is about the administrative salaries. I think it was in the open session. I know in personal conversations, we've mentioned this before, that many of the smaller nonprofits are run by their administration. Those people who are doing the work of the nonprofit, a lot of the work that's being done in our county that our county does not do, but you have rightly identified, we need to have done. A lot of the heavy lifting throughout our, our county. I lost count of the number of nonprofits. It's well in excess of over four hundred, you know, and not all of them come and ask for, for help. But I hope that as you move forward in this kind of rethinking or your discussion afterwards, that you open up the funding thinking and calculus to include those smaller nonprofits that have, their top staff are doing the work. Remember, they're also the ones, and I don't mean to, I'm not meaning to lecture with a little sound like that. They're the ones that also have to figure out how to get through the whole application process. So, they're writing the grants, they're tracking it, they're making the calls to Gwen. Gwen, I can't go any further without saying thank you. I hear nothing but bravos all across the board from nonprofits who feel lost and in the, in, at sea without a rudder, and they call you, and you, you help them focus to get through this process. So, I, I really thank every effort you do. The second point is the application period. I hope that you'll bring under discussion. Currently, I believe it comes in November and then ends January, usually, usually early January, I think the second week of January. That is conveniently placed during the major holiday season. So, again, I hate to keep focusing on the smaller nonprofits, but these are people who are sometimes during the holiday period, for the services they're providing, it is the busiest time ever. If there's some way that we can open that up to a, a. If there's some way that we can open that up to a shoulder period, I know you'd like to get it done in January so you can get the work done, so you can get to this point here. You have a lot of work, but maybe we could open that up earlier. Even another week at either end of that would really help a lot of the nonprofits.
Item five, we'll take that into account.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Item five, we'll take that into account.
Yeah, that's right. Thanks, Randy. I think I'll have some other thoughts about individual, about the overall funding, but I think I'll hold those now until we begin our discussion about the overall funding for the budget.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Randy. I think I wrote down your numbers correctly. You said seventy applied this year and forty last year, so thirty new applications?
Approximately, yes.
And is that the biggest increase you've seen?
Yes, yes. I think when we started this, we probably had about thirty applications. And it grew to forty, forty-two, something like that. And then, you know, I think it's gotten traction now.
Do you have any information or statistics on how many of them might have applied to the endowment for funding as well?
I don't personally, I don't think we have that information, but that'd be a worthwhile endeavor to look at.
Those were kind of my thoughts, you know. But we can have this discussion later. But a lot of that was my thought, is when the endowment was created, that they would kind of shift towards that funding for, instead of with the county. But I didn't know if we asked that question.
We did, we did ask if they had any large funding sources. Not sure if we got any responses specific to the endowment. Didn't do it this year, okay. We've done it in the past, so it's a question that can be added back to the application, perhaps, if that's what the commissioners would like.
Because I know the proposed budget does not fully fund, I know that what Rob is probably going to talk about in a little bit. But I wonder what it would look like next year if there's thirty new next year.
Right.
How would the county sustain that?
Right.
That's just some comments.
I would imagine you'll have more applications next year. But this was a giant leap. Normally, we see about a ten percent increase per year, not what we did this year.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll just add, and I apologize for equivocation, Vice Chair Pierce. The recommended budget does fully fund at the same level that we did last year, but the request from the non-agency funding committee is for about eight hundred thousand more than what we funded last year.
Correct.
Commissioner Sklees, I just could piggyback on there that I think the, it's the funding is level of last year that funded fifty of the, our non-county agencies. And the request coming forward this year is for sixty-nine. So, and, you know, the numbers on that was a forty percent increase. So the need essentially has grown, and the amount has stayed the same. So just to kind of give a perspective of that.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Randy, I want to thank you and your team for this year's presentation. As you know, from first presentation till today, I've been very critical of the process. Wanted to see some continuous improvement, and today I've seen tremendous improvement. And your approach to how you work with nonprofits to identify the funding levels that's needed, refining your process, recognizing that nonprofits that are small in nature will need resources to fund the administrative side of things as well. You know, the questions asked about the endowment, you know, for me, being the only commissioner on this board that voted to sell the hospital, my vision for the endowment was that we would not duplicate or replace the role of this down-county agency funding organization, but to enhance and increase capacity for nonprofits. We've seen the exact opposite of that from the endowment. There was no reason for you all to ask the endowment this past year what they gave, or nonprofits that they got from the endowment, because they gave pretty much none. The majority of the money went to either K for Community College or to the schools or to UNCW, which are pretty much state-funded operations. And, you know, for me, the initial goal was that there'd be more resources to the local nonprofits, the grassroots that are doing the real work in our community, to expand their capacity. And I'm hoping that as they retool their ship with the endowment, that they'll figure that part out, just like you all have figured things out, and help the individuals in our community that need help the most. You know, when this thing first got started, prior to this community being started, it was commissioners that did this. And it was a very political process. We gave roughly a million dollars out every year. And pretty much whoever's pet project got funded, got funded. And there were a whole lot less agencies, probably twenty-five to thirty at the most that got funding. And then the idea came about was to put some individuals that are citizen representatives that can, you know, kind of diffuse that process. The board commissioner still has to vote on it and approve it. As you can see, there's always moving numbers within that, but have someone else looking at things and make it more objective. And so I appreciate the hundred-plus hours that you and your team, your board have put in. Thank you all for accepting the challenge. You know, Randy, thank you for being here every year and hearing all the comments. You know, you're a true professional, period. Not just my neighbor, but you're a true professional as well to stand here and to hear the comments, but then to go back and go back to the drawing board and rewrite the script and make things better. Today, to me, what you all have brought to us is brilliant, what I've been looking for for a while now. Unfortunately, you know, I don't have enough, well, actually, we do have enough money to fund all the requests. It's a matter of the will to fund all the requests. So again, thank you.
Well, thank you. I thank the committee. I'd like to thank all my committee members, because they're the ones that do the hard lifting, the heavy lifting. Consideration of a higher level of funding would be exactly what we'd want to see. And as a citizen, I think your comments on the endowment are spot on. We should be working ourselves out of this job. Thank you.
Thank you again, Randy. As you heard from his presentation, and as you've already mentioned, the non-county agency committee is recommending funding at two million four sixty-one, two nineteen. And as a reminder, in management's recommended budget, this slide item was budgeted at a million six oh eight, three thirteen, which represents level funding from a totality perspective with the twenty-four fiscal year. Unless there's specific guidance that we, staff hears, we would scale back each one of the recommended requests by approximately one-third to achieve the million six oh eight that's in the recommended budget. Next, the state's general statutes require a public hearing to be held related to the recommended budget.
Mr. Chairman, we need to first close the public hearing that we just had, if I'm not mistaken. Unless I am mistaken. If the chairman didn't follow the script here and called to close the public hearing for the non-county agencies.
Wait, I never opened it.
Clerk could help out a little bit, please?
Mr. Chair, once Mr. Credle has completed his presentation, then you'll open up the public hearing on the budget. And the non-county part was not under the public hearing part. It's under the budget, please.
This slide recaps highlights of the recommended budget, including no change in the base property rate, tax rate of forty-five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value, and no change in the unincorporated fire district rate of seven point two five cents per assessed, per hundred dollars of assessed value. The recommended budget uses no fund balance and no use of the principal of the revenue stabilization fund, while eight point eight million dollars of principal usage of the mental health and substance use disorder fund is budgeted to support public health initiatives. The recommended budget includes five point five million dollars of additional fund, operating funds for the schools, maintains funding for twelve pre-K classes, and maintains board initiatives to have a nurse in every school and for each school to have access to a mental health counselor. For the first time since the stormwater fee was established in two thousand nineteen, an increase of eight point seven percent is recommended in order to maintain and enhance those services, while the landfill tipping fee of fifty-two dollars per ton is unchanged. There was discussion at recent board meetings regarding the potential for sustainability manager, and staff has reviewed that, and we believe we have identified a vacant position, fully funded vacant position that we can shift over to be that sustainability manager if it's the will of the commissioners. Finally, I note that the public hearing notice was published on June sixth. Thank you.
Thank you. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one fifty-nine dash one-two B, before adopting the budget ordinance, the board shall hold a public hearing at which time any persons who wish to be heard on the budget may appear. This public hearing for the twenty-four, twenty-five recommended budget meets these requirements. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the board now will hear public comments. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes, and I believe there's a clock on the podium up there. But three minutes is it. I mean, that's all. We got a lot of people speaking today. And the first person to speak will be Dr. Charles Faust.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak here today. We presented our budget request in May. The request was for ten point one million in addition to our current level of funding. As we saw in the presentation, that was what was just presented by the county finance officer, the recommendation is for the five point five million. We have budgets for both of those. The ten point one million dollar request or the five point five million, we've got budgets for both of those. Of course, the ten point one is going to allow us to save more positions. We were looking at a reduction of two hundred, two hundred and eighty approximate positions that we would need to reduce. And that's coming from a reduction in ESER, which accounts for about forty-four posi, I'm sorry, seventy-seven positions. And then also, we've had reductions from the state, and we are no longer have the ability to use fund balance to be able to pick up some additional positions. So we're in, both of these budgets that we have shared with our board, we're not using fund balance going forward because we don't have that. We don't feel comfortable using fund balance any longer. And Dr. Faust, I don't know if you would like that? And we'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have related to our budget request.
Anybody got anything to say?
Sorry, Dr. Faust, are you going to speak?
I'm here to answer questions. Yes, Ashley covered it.
Actually, I did mention in your opening presentation there that you were no longer considering using fund balance. But what's behind that?
We currently have estimated at the end of this year, we're only going to have about three million. That's considering some lapse salaries, because we did put a hiring freeze in place around January. So we are anticipating to have not used, we actually appropriated ten million dollars of fund balance in this year's budget. But we're anticipating only using around seven million of that because of some of the things that we didn't put in place to reduce our spending during the year. But we don't feel comfortable going forward. We need to have some fund balance for cash flow and for emergency situations. And so that's the reason we no longer want to include that as part of our budget for reoccurring items.
I think we've had this conversation before, and I understand the want on the school system to have fund balance. And I appreciate the efforts to kind of spend that down. I know in years past, it had swollen up large. And you made a concerted effort to. Just want to reiterate for, I mean, I know you know this, but many of the public don't, that the county is there for those emergencies. So, and I know you're in a tight budget year. I think looking to the future, that we have opportunities to open things up. We encourage you to take a hard look at that fund balance. I applaud your kind of conservative approach and always kind of squirreling away a little bit of money that's there. I can tell you, this board of commissioners is here, and we will look favorably upon, you know, any emergency requests that you have there. So I guess it's a long way of saying, please use whatever available funds you have for those positions that can't be funded. Also, I know, and there's been in the conversation around the public, focus on the five point five million dollars that we're doing in recurring funding here. But in that also is additional, call it bucket of money for the nurses, the school nurses, and for the mental health therapists, which to us represents another, you know, almost two million dollars of money that's coming in to make sure that we have that. I guess that was money that you just didn't budget in there. So I'm curious as to why you don't include that in the conversation, in the five point five.
Well, before you answer that, and I exactly wanted to point out exactly what you're saying, Commissioners Apple, for the public to understand, it's five-five plus two-one for school nurses and mental health, and one point nine-five for pre-K. So that's more like nine-five. I just want them to hear that number, nine-five, not five-five. Nate, go ahead.
Thank you.
Do you want me to answer that?
Oh, she was actually answering it for us.
So the reason we didn't include the mental health section, like the two million dollars, is because we don't actually pay for that. That doesn't, even though the services are going to help our students, that we aren't actually writing checks or paying salaries related to those things. The county does that on our behalf.
But all of your money is the county's money?
Correct.
So...
It's just not built into the budget. So I apologize for the confusion.
Just a semantical thing here that we're going on, yeah. And the pre-K money falls in the same category?
We actually look at that as a grant, but you are correct. I should have included that one point nine million when I was saying the five point five. I apologize for that, because that is actually in our budget, and we pay the salaries and expenses for that.
Ah, that jumps up to almost seven point five or seven point four. Then you add the other, you know, two point one. Commissioner Pierce is right. County commissioners here, I guess I'm being a little overly sensitive, because in the public commentary that's out there, there's a sense that we are not hearing you. Boy, are we hearing you and the entire public out there. And we're responding, responding with, I believe, significant funding for our school systems to keep our children safe and to provide those services there. And we are here, we have always been here, and we will always be here for you. And I know Superintendent Faust, you know, we have a terrific relationship. And I know the discussion is here, and I know you don't control the social media or the public conversation that's out there. And it's just pretty frustrating to hear constantly, you know, hey, they're asking for ten, you're only giving them five point five. Get off that now, as we've now kind of discovered there's more to that, that it actually is nine point two, nine point three million dollars is what we're responding to.
Nine-five-fifty.
Excuse me, nine-five, thank you.
Nine-five-fifty.
That's all, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, no, don't.
Next is Leslie Posey.
Good morning.
Morning.
Since I moved to Wilmington in nineteen eighty-nine, it has been obvious that the primary goal of both the county and city governments is growth.
Ma'am, could I interrupt you quickly?
Yes.
And could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Leslie Posey. I am a member of the New Hanover County Educational Justice Organization. We are an advocacy group for teachers and students in the New Hanover County schools.
And you live in New Hanover County?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
May I start over? Since I moved to Wilmington in nineteen eighty-nine, it has been obvious that the primary goal of both county and city governments is growth. Usually, no more than a request from a developer for rezoning, and a part of the county is suddenly no longer agriculture but retail and housing, such as turning a horse farm into Mayfair. Open forest and swampland is becoming industry of various types. It's all about jobs and bringing more people into the New Hanover County tax base. But you know what? People are not coming without adequate services. The employees of those new businesses tend to have families. And when looking at possible employment, do you know what the first thing people ask about? The schools. Not the beach, not the shopping, not the entertainment venues, the schools. If you Google "New Hanover County schools" right now, what you find isn't very positive. Policies of our current school board are making national news, but not for reasons that will attract people with kids. Policies such as controlling what teachers can put on their walls. Policies that blatantly discriminate. But most critical, the fact that the district is about to cut two hundred and eighty vital positions. Kids in school need counselors, social workers, custodians. There needs to be a reasonable student-to-teacher ratio. ratio. When my kids were in school, every kindergarten, first and second grade class had a full-time teacher assistant for classes of no more than eighteen kids. Now, there are no, no more assistants except for special education, and sixty of those are on the chopping block. More than half of the positions being cut are student-facing. I realize that our state constitution requires the legislature to adequately fund schools, but they won't. So, until that changes, it falls on the counties to make up the difference. And in New Hanover County, the difference is twenty million dollars, not five point five million. I urge you to do what is best for our kids, and remember that since jobs are a priority, good schools should be too. Thank you."
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Ayana Rogers?
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Ayana Rogers. Um, I'm here to speak on the incredible impact that Port City United has had on my life as a young adult. Uh, it's, it's tough to find your way and navigate through the, um, navigate through life challenges, but I'm grateful to have had a wavering support of a, of a community resource coordinator at every step. The CRCs have given me a reason to come to school daily and have inspired me to pursue higher education because of their hard work and dedication. I am proud to say that I have accepted a college, a college, a college basketball scholarship, and will be starting this fall at, uh, CFCC. There are many kids like me at New Hanover High School who are looking for guidance, and PCU has been that guiding light for us. I ask, I ask that you recognize the importance of having a caring adult and similarly, similar life experiences who genuinely cares about students in our schools. Thank you.
Ayana, could you please introduce yourself?
Ayana Rogers.
And you live in New Hanover County?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Shanaja Franks?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Shanaja Franks, and I'm a graduate from New Hanover High School. Um, I graduated with a GPA of a four point two, and today I'm here to express my appreciation and to acknowledge PCU's wonderful help and support. Um, PCU's hard work and dedication in New Hanover County schools is truly admiring. Um, for example, when New Hanover High School was impacted with a tragic school shooting, I thought I would never step back foot into that school, but PCU really assured me that I am safe and never alone. They also boosted my confidence when it came to being involved in my school, like my extracurricular activities such as stay, beta club, dual enrollment, and National Honor Society. And not only do they offer us students with excellent support, but they also, um, help students' family, uh, financially, whether it's funds, jobs, programs, and many more. And I'm just really extremely excited to announce that, um, I had did, I did receive, uh, twelve thousand dollars in scholarship money with the help, um, of applying to these scholarships by PCU, and I will be attending New Hanover, I mean, I will be attending, um, North Carolina Central University. Um, and again, just, I just wanna thank you, the PCU, for their love and support day-to-day at our New Hanover County schools, 'cause without y'all, I don't know. But, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conyers?
Good morning. My name is Zakaya Conyers, and I just wanna thank PCU for everything they've done. When I first started off at Hanover, I went in tenth grade 'cause I wasn't there as a freshman, but when I got there, I didn't really know anyone at all, and with the help of them, I'd be, gotten new programs like stay and made new friends, 'cause while I was there during the eleventh grade, I was bullied a lot where I wanted to drop out of school, but with the help of Essence, Newcurry, Austin, Stanley, I got back into all the different programs. I became an honor student. I got help with all my classes. I even got the chance to graduate early, my twelfth grade year. I went to Cape Fear for early childhood education with the help of Austin. He made sure I got all my work done. He didn't like writing essays, but he helped me with my essay and all, and I appreciate the early fond stuff they did. Austin even helped my other cousins. My cousin wanted to drop out so many times, but the help of Austin, he brought him to school. He made sure we got there on time, made sure we'd had help with everything we needed. Like even Essence, I struggled in math badly. She helped come up with different ways to help me with my math homework, helped me find tutors. They even helped me when I was ready about getting fired from my job. They helped me come up with resources and ways to talk to my manager to come up with better ways, to have a better attitude at work, better attitude at home. Even, they even helped with my mom. I had a bad relationship with her until they helped me come with ways to sit down and talk to her and find communication skills, and they're just like basically a second family, and they helped me with everything I need. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Joy Williamson?
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I, Joy Williamson, is coming before you on behalf of PCU. PCU has been there for me and my son Leroy, um, who had to do community services. They were there for him while he was in jail. They have been there supportive. They have been there counseling us. They came to court for us on their, their job time as well as they off, finding resources to help my son and to help myself. They have been another family for us. My son is always helping homeless people and constantly being heard in the process. Since he was around the seventh or eighth grade, he has been diagnosed with schizophrenia, ADD, and ODD. My son has been dealing with mental health issues most of his life. He has been in and out many hospitals throughout the years, and I'm always seeking to help him. However, he is naive and, and how to go about certain things, and it seems to backfire on him, and he gets in trouble. He was able to do community service, as I mentioned before, at PCU. When he got into trouble and ended up in jail, I was able to get, go to see PCU, and they were able to assist him in court and being very supportive to both myself as well as him, many times. They were there for my son to take him to his doctor's appointment when I was not available to be there for him and checking to see how he's doing. I know the staff and team of PCU is effective throughout the community and other surrounding areas. I know a few members personally that's always there for me and my family and friends. They're always willing and available to lend a helping hand, socialize with and bringing people together into fellowship, enriching, mentoring, and showing how to be real. With love and kindness, the staff of PCU wants good to whomever they come in contact with. They're always ready and willing to help in whatever capacity necessary and doing everything in love. PCU cares for the community and wants to make a difference in people's lives. I realize we are not perfect in life. We all make mistakes, and some people, mistakes are hidden and some are not, and we learn from that mistakes. However, I don't feel that terminating a new organization because of someone's mistakes should take place. I have been to other occasions that PCU have done with class to serve the community in caring for children, mothers, fathers, and take pride in what they do and a smile on their faces every time I come in contact.
Ms. Williams, your time is up.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yolanda Bostic?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Uh, my name is Yolanda Bostic. I am actually a native of New Hanover County. I was born here in nineteen sixty-eight. As a native of this county, I have watched several changes in my life. I've also planned several Stop the Violence movements in this area. I could not believe the, the way that, I call it my city, the direction that it was going. When I decided to speak today, I was gonna come at you with numbers and data, but you already know the numbers. You already know the data. So, God laid it upon my heart to come from a different direction. PCU being the young organization that it is, I kinda think of it as a child, and New Hanover County as its parents. If your child makes a mistake, you do not throw that child away. It is your job and your responsibility as parents to guide and teach that child and turn that mistake into a lesson learned, so that it may grow up to be responsible. Also, the word grace came to mind. I could be wrong, but I truly believe that each and every one of you, as well as each and every person in this room, has been given a measure of grace in their lives for the things that we know that have been done and the things that we don't know that have been done. With that being said, I stand here in favor of PCU. I feel that it is an organization that will continue to help the city of Wilmington and New Hanover County reach the goals that it wants to reach as far as changing the direction in which we are going, as far as violence, the school-to-prison pipeline, absent parentees, uh, low grades. It's just so many things. I'm not the most eloquent speaker, but I am very, very passionate, and I don't put my stamp of approval on anything that I don't truly believe in. And to quote Commissioner Barfield, "Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dwight Hill?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dwight Hill. I'm from Chicago, Illinois. I've been a resident of New Hanover County for three and a half years. I'm coming here this morning on behalf of Port City United. I am a community outreach specialist. I've worked with the community with different agencies, as a mentor to those who are still, uh, in organizations, those that are struggling with mental health and substance use disorder. Port City United has allowed me the platform to help those who are still out here struggling. I come before you all as a living witness that there is change. You're looking at a person, a miracle, who was once struggling with alcohol, homeless, and justice involved. Me today being a non-active, what you call game member, we call organizations, I am living proof that the program of Port City United works, and I'm living proof that the plan that you guys put together will work. I'm also living proof that if given a chance and more grace, that we will reach more people who are still out here doing unhealthy things. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I hope I get this right. Jamir Jamook?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jamir Jamook. I am a Link Incorporated case manager here in New Hanover County, a transplant from Onslow County, but I have been active in the community for quite some time. Um, I don't think I can say anything up here that hasn't already been said, um, but I would like to say that, being from Onslow County, if you travel maybe thirty minutes to an hour outside of this county and start to pay attention to some of the things that's going on in our surrounding areas, you will see that some of those counties and some of those cities aren't as progressive as New Hanover County. And the reason being is because New Hanover County has historically, um, been the one to step up and create new initiatives and to try different things, um, that are unorthodox and outside the box. Um, and that has definitely been necessarily, uh, the case with Port City United, and me as a case manager, I've had the, um, the luxury to work with them in a multitude of capacities, from the mediation team, from the connect center, um, from being able to have my clients, um, contact the CRCs so that their children can receive additional support. Now, with all that being said, I'm frustrated by the fact that it seems like every other year, we have a new initiative. Um, there's a new calling cry in the community, uh, for somebody to step up and create a solution. And when the shooting happened at New Hanover, uh, high school, the community called out, they cried for help, and our elected leaders and the people in our community stepped up to address, uh, a solution for that particular problem, but sorta like Ms. Bostic spoke to, and with them being in their infancy, I think it's very unfair to try to find statistical data to jump off the page in a timeframe of just two years. I mean, they are still young in their infancy, and if you ask the people in the community, no disrespect to the people at the podium and the people sitting behind there, but if you actually go in the community and talk to the people in the schools, parents, talk to the people in, um, local community-based organizations, talk to the people living in the community, talk to the children, as you've seen came up here, you will find that there's tangible work being done through Port City United. And we always talk about how big we supposed to be on community collaboration, and I think that's an emphasis that we need to place on this particular situation, because you got a lot of people that get territorial, and they start talking about the money, and they start talking about what money is gonna be left on the table if we get rid of this particular entity, but people are not equating what's actually being done in the trenches to help these people. And this is bigger than politics, this is bigger than profits. This is about people. And until we take that in consideration, I don't think we're doing our community, uh, a due service. So, I ask that you take in consideration the fact that the people in PCU have been working with all the community-based organizations, and if you go talk to any of them, as you've already heard from many of them, you'll know that they actually doing what they said they're gonna be doing, and if you give them a little bit more time, even better results will take place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Demond Wells?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Part two. It's my second time. Uh, so, another introduction, um, I was on death row, I was facing death row, I was facing a life sentence. Um, I did fifteen years in prison. Uh, I got convicted of murder, but there was grace and there was truth in the matter. Now, I work with Link Incorporated, and I work with UNC School of Medicine at Tar Heels. I'm a community health worker. I work with them, so I wanted to come back again. I wanted to give you a little recap. All of us got our phones with us. We got Apples, whatever, right? So, the reason why we got this phone is because there was a lot of restructuring. There's a lot of grooming, a lot of, how they call it, corporate restructuring. They didn't just give up. Four motor corporations didn't just give up. Walmart didn't just give up. We had to restructure. There was grace. Some people lost jobs, some people gained jobs, but we have the luxuries of having these companies, these companies and these corporations now because they didn't give up. So, we as a community don't give up. So, when the brothers and sisters that was talking on the radio, or the brothers that was in the car talking on the radios about killing all black people, the police department closed down. They didn't give up. They restructured. Had to get rid of a few people. A couple, uh, well, one individual, no names, and no shade thrown. Had a little too much to drink, driving home, got pulled over by the police. We still here. Criminal record, expunged, got a raise, still working, even though I know they're doing some investigating. Just wanna give you that. Uh, so, I got a demonstration I'm gonna give you. She said, "Give me a half a sheet of paper." So, I folded a sheet of paper and I give it to her and a half. She says, "Give me half a sheet of paper." I tell the people in half, I give it to her. It's all about where you sit. You have the skybox, you have the sideline, you have the- you have the, the middle rows. So your perception is, did I give her half a piece of paper? Or did I give her half a piece of paper? So working with PCU, remember, we're saying that the people that are closest to the problem are closest to the solution. We like, we like the resources and the power. You all have the power. The power is in the people. We voted you in. And I just need a little more grace. We just asking for more time for restructuring. Um, you're bringing brothers and sisters out of middle-class culture into, uh, I mean, out of, I guess, impacted class culture to middle-class culture. So we asking for personal development. We asking for, you know, wisdom, knowledge and understanding. And again, I like the description the sister gave before me about the child. You know, "Don't throw out the baby with the bathwater." And let's thank you all again for your time. Just a little more grace, just a little more mercy. Just a little more grace, just a little more mercy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lynda Higgins?
Hello.
There.
I'm Lynda Higgins. I live in New Hanover County. I've lived here for about four years, almost five now. I came and spoke to you three months ago when you all schooled me on how it was inappropriate for me to tell you that we needed twenty million dollars for the schools. Because it wasn't the right time. It's never the right time, evidently, for us to speak up as a community and tell you we need money for the schools. That day, you approved or sent forward seventeen million dollars for the Sheriff's Department. Because you understood that inflation had affected their budget. But every time we talk about the school budget, inflation is a non-issue to you. The school budget has also been affected by inflation. Toilet paper costs more. So do school supplies. We need the twenty million dollars for the schools. You can spin it that you're giving them nine. They still need twenty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Campbell?
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Campbell, I'm a citizen of Wilmington. Uh, I came to speak on two issues. One was, um, I'm looking to encourage you to help Genesis Block, who is reaching out to small businesses, minority businesses, women-owned businesses. A great track record with four years of success. Secondly, I wanted to speak on behalf of Port City United. I, I think that, uh, if you were to listen to the news, you would think that Port City United is being run by a bunch of gang members and thugs. You would also think that, um, uh, maybe it's time to start and do something different. But I, I think that Port City United was a bold step to a systematic problem that has been impacting our community for generations. In fact, it's, uh, the communities that Port City United is trying to reach are steeped with generational poverty, generational risk of, of being incarcerated. So often, we look at this community and we, we almost consider them as lost. I, I don't think they're lost, I think we left them. I think, I think fathers left this community that we're trying to reach. That's why about eighty percent of the households are single parents trying to make a difference. And, and they find resources like Port City United and it fills the gap. So often, I think that we can, we can get so much distance from the issue that we see them as expendable. These are not expendable people. Because I grew up in that same neighborhood. And if I had gotten lost and people didn't put in for programs to help me, where would I be? I would encourage you to take another look. As the gentleman said, "Give them a little bit of grace." It's not the first time. Everybody get caught up on gang members. You look at the statistics, forty-seven staff. Uh, I think six of them are former gang members. Fifty percent of them have degrees. We've got the right people in the right place. I'm reminded, when you think about sending the gang members, I'm reminded of what Jesus said to Peter. He said, "Peter," because Peter would like to fight and cuss and cut off people's ears. He said, "The devil desires to sift you as weak, but when you come out, go back and strengthen your brother." We need those gang members. Cause I, as much authority as I have, I have zero authority in the neighborhoods we're trying to reach. We need to send somebody back who has credibility and help them strengthen others to come out. Don't cancel it. Commit to it. Double down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Ashley Spambauer? Was that close? Was that close to being right?
Uh, we were in the right ballpark.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm Ashley Spambauer. I'm the lead organizer of New Hanover for All. And for the past three months, we've been running, uh, an issue campaign called Fund the Future to try to save our already crumbling, uh, public school infrastructure. Um, I've had the pleasure of sitting down with a few of you. Some of you have, uh, uh, not given me the time, but I'm here to try to reframe this for you, if I could, because in all fairness, uh, we do not feel heard. We're not asking for a magic number. We're not asking for a five or a nine or a twenty. We are asking you to keep educators in our schools. Period. Whatever that costs. The lack of transparency between the school board and the county commission is a huge issue. We can't get the right numbers because nobody seems to know what's going on. How is that the case in a city, in a, in a county this size, the third richest county in the state, that we're sitting here handing out millions of dollars to the sheriff's office and having to fight with you to keep teachers in our schools? I understand that yet there's some frustration here with the school board, but if I'm to be honest, um, we've knocked on thousands of doors. We've collected a thousand signatures, hundreds of postcards. It's an election year and in November, I don't expect either this board or that board to keep looking like this. Like, there are people here in New Hanover County who are telling you where the fires are. And you guys have the water and you are not putting out the fires. Our kids are in danger. You cannot take six hundred eyes off of them while they're in school. You cannot expect teachers to be able to handle way more students than they're supposed to. I mean, I'm, I'm reading this vision and this mission that you have and not a single one of these things is possible if we don't give our kids a proper education. We've asked you to save the two-hundred-and-seventy-nine jobs that are on the to- the chopping block. Your job's to figure out what that costs and where it comes from. Because we voted for you, we work here, we live here. You work for us. That's it. We're tired of this. And you can do that without defunding libraries and PCU and parks and the things that are also on fire in New Hanover County. Because everybody in this room is here to tell you which part of this county is on fire for them. I don't know what life is like for you five when you walk out of here, but we are, we are struggling to survive, to keep our kids safe, to get them an education, to let them like have the same opportunities that we have while the prices of everything goes up. Teachers aren't getting paid anymore. They're buying supplies with their own money. Our kids deserve better than this. Our teachers deserve better than this. And you can do better than this.
Your time's up, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Leo Hussain?
Hello. My name is Leo with, uh, chapter organizer with New Hanover for All. Uh, we're a community outreach and empowerment program. Uh, I stand before you today to address the, to address, to address one grave issue facing our community amongst many. The perpetual and chronic underfunding of our schools in New Hanover County. Despite being one of the wealthiest counties in North Carolina, our schools rank amongst the most poorly funded in the entire state. This paradox is troubling and it's unacceptable. How did we arrive at this point? The decision to withhold adequate funding for our education, especially for the working-class families of Wilmington, is glaringly evident. It is a decision that will be remembered. We have a thousand signatures. Got a thousand eyes on you, two thousand eyes on you. Uh, it is a decision that will be remembered. We are failing to protect essential positions. School counselors, special education teachers and school nurses. Positions that are critical for the well-being and future of the working-class children of Wilmington, North Carolina, New Hanover County. The upcoming education vote to continue to fund these students-facing positions is crucial. It's not just another item on the agenda. It's a vote that will be heard throughout Wilmington. It represents our commitment, your commitment to the children of the community and to their right to a robust and equitable education. We must prioritize their needs and ensure that every child has access to the, to the resources and support that they deserve as children of New Hanover County. We cannot afford to be passive. The future of our children and indeed the future of Wilmington depends on our actions today. Failing to retain these roles is more than just a budgetary oversight. To the working-class of New Hanover County, it would be viewed as a deliberate act in an ongoing class war that is unfolding right before our eyes. This underfunding is a clear signal that the needs of our most vulnerable students are being ignored. Let us remember that investing in education is investing in our community's future. Let us make the right choice and fund our future. I would like to personally hand you guys out these postcards that people wrote to you guys and some for Mr. Faust. Uh, just to hand it to you so you have a physical representation of the eyes that are on you in an elected position. Is that okay?
Yes, sir. Give them to this young lady right over here.
Thank you so much for allowing us to speak.
Thank you.
Appreciate you always.
Anna Lee?
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Anna Lee. I'm a lifelong New Hanover County resident, um, a mom of two kids. One starting high school at Hagerd this fall and one entering fifth grade, um, who's not in a New Hanover County school. And I tell you about my kids because their well-being motivates me, just as it does for all parents. But honestly, I'd be here today even if I didn't have kids. Why? Well, there's a quote I've encountered recently from the genius mind of James Baldwin that explains my rationale. Here's what he said. "The children are always ours, every single one of them, all over the globe." I believe this with all my heart as regards to the kids of the world, but for today, I want to zoom back in from the global to the local and restate that Baldwin quote to say this. "The children are always ours, every single one of them, all over the county." In your decisions today on the New Hanover County Schools budget allocation, on funding for Port City United and honestly, on all of the proposed expenditures, you have the choice to show that you indeed believe that every single one of the children of New Hanover County is your own. That means supporting a program like Port City United that serves the most vulnerable in our county. And it means fully funding the needs of our school system by increasing the New Hanover County Schools expenditures to the full twenty million dollars or whatever it is they need to fully meet the needs of our students. I ask you today to allocate sufficient funding to our schools so we can maintain all two-hundred-and-seventy-plus student-facing positions that have been serving our kids. Again, I could tell you to protect those positions because my children have utilized exceptional children's services that could be cut. I can tell you that because I want to make sure my kids get every service they need. But I'm here asking you to do that not for my kids, but for all kids. For the parents and the kids who have to work two, three jobs to sustain themselves and can't show up at nine o'clock on a Monday morning to speak. And for those kids and families who don't have enough food on the table and whose teachers and counselors help them get access to programs so we'll make that a bit easier. I'm asking you to do it for each and every child in our county school system. In closing, I'd like to note that there is more to that quote by Baldwin I mentioned. Here's what he says in full. "The children are always ours, every single one of them, all over the globe." And I am beginning to suspect that whoever is incapable of recognizing this may be incapable of morality. I'm asking you today to make the deeply moral choice to see all the children and families of New Hanover County as your own. And to ask you to continue your support for Port City United and to use all of the budgetary tools at your disposal to support the funding of all, of New Hanover County Schools at a level that maintains all two-hundred-and-seventy-plus student-facing positions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Edgar Santos?
Hello?
Hello.
Okay, cool. Hello, uh, my name is Edgar Santos. I'm honestly not a big of a public speaker. I was just found out, found out about all this yesterday. I was hanging out with my nephews, going to the park, and I heard about the funding. Um, I came from Mexico to the United States to have an opportunity for an education. And without the counselors or the teachers or the nurses, I don't think I would have made an impact and wanted to learn as much as I did whenever I was a kid. And it's all thanks to them. I wanna say that whenever I was in high school, I had a coach. I was always skipping and he was always finding me. Didn't matter where I was. He was like, "Hey, come here, you gotta go to class. You gotta study, you gotta learn." And if it wasn't for him being there, then I don't know where I would have been now. I guess what I'm trying to say is we need to focus on that. That without teachers and counselors, there would be more people like me that don't know the difference between right and wrong. And thanks to them, I'm very grateful where I'm at. And I'm, and I'm doing my best to help my community whichever way I can. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Michelle Gunn?
Good morning, Commissioners. I stand before you today to advocate for the continuation of a crucial initiative that has proven its worth in our community. The Community Resource Coordinator Program under Port City United. For the past few years, the CRC program has been a beacon of hope for some of our most vulnerable and marginalized students in the school system. Providing them with the support and resources they need to overcome the challenges they face, both in and out of the classroom. However, the future of this vital program is now in jeopardy as we are now, uh, been in discussions about its potential defunding. I am currently employed with Link Incorporated. The county funded our organization for three CRCs and their impact in the school system has been nothing short of remarkable. In the last fiscal year alone, our CRC served nearly one hundred students. The state average of student-to-teacher ratio is fifteen to one. That means that our CRC's work equated to supporting six full classrooms. The cost of providing these services for our organization was approximately fifteen dollars per student, which is a very small price to pay when compared to the average cost of a school day or even worse, the staggering expenses of juvenile detention. The need for CRCs is not merely a matter of convenience. It is a matter of urgency. As some students are disproportionately affected by disciplinary actions and the school-to-prison pipeline. By continuing to invest in the CRCs, we can maintain the momentum we have built and further strengthen our efforts to break the cycle of marginalization. We can prevent our children from becoming statistics in the juvenile We can prevent our children from becoming statistics in the juvenile justice system, and instead, we can empower them. Some may argue that funding CRC is a luxury that we cannot afford, but actually, it is an investment that we cannot afford to ignore. The cost of inaction is far greater, both in terms of the financial burden of the juvenile detention center and the immeasurable toll on the lives of our children. Funding the school system and funding CRCs are not mutually exclusive. They can complement each other's efforts. They work in tandem to ensure the well-being and success of our youth. By supporting both initiatives, we demonstrate our commitment to the holistic development of our children, recognizing that their academic achievement is inextricably linked to their emotional and social well-being. Today, I implore you to renew your commitment to fund PCU. By continuing to fund this initiative, you will not only be providing essential support to our most vulnerable children, but also standing united in our commitment to nurturing the potential of every single child.
Ms. Gunn, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Tim Merrick.
Thank you. My name's Tim Merrick. I'm a candidate for the Board of Education, and I appreciate the opportunity to approach you today. You know, my remarks today are not meant as a rebuke to all the services you've provided to our community and all the help that you've given our schools. I want to make that clear. But I also want to make sure that you understand that all the years of increasing funding, now, Mr. Barfield, you've been on this board for a long time, and you've seen that we have given more and more and more to our schools, and we are grateful. But I hope you also understand that that's because the state allotments have not increased for all the time that you've been on this board, or not meaningfully anyway. So if the state is not going to help us, it does fall upon you, and I'm sorry for that. It's not fair. It's not fair to the citizens of this county. But Mr. Zappel and Ms. Pierce, I appreciate you saying perspective. We need to have perspective. It's not just 99 million. It's 99 million plus 2.1 plus 1.9 plus, there's some others in there, right? Even if we added up to $110 million, that's still only $4,200 to $4,400 per student per year. In terms of perspective, I need to highlight the fact that the national average for local investment in schools is $7,200 per student per year, and that's with states that supply more than our state does. Mr. Reivenberg, we talked about this a couple of months ago. Our state is one of the worst in the whole union on supplying money to our kids. So it's not fair. You're being burdened, and I'd like this to be, I'd like us to look at a shared vision for our community and for our children. It might not happen this year. It might not happen as far as it needs to go this year, but we need to start thinking. $7,200 per student is 180 million. Can you please start broadening the vision for what we need? Our kids need more. Next year, you're going to have a reevaluation of properties. I know there's a lot more developments that are on the tax rolls, and we're going to get a big jump, and I'm grateful for that. But our kids can't wait until next year. We saw what happened with the pandemic. We all saw the dip in their scores. If we leave them without enough teachers, if we leave them without the proper ability to learn, we're going to have another dip. I know we're paying our sheriffs a bunch more money this year because we don't have enough sheriffs and they're going to be working overtime. Our teachers have been given additional duties, and they are not being given overtime. And it is just as much a security issue in our schools. We've had three times that guns have come into the schools this year. It's because of safety that I ask you for this funding for our school students, please.
Thanks, sir.
David Morgan.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
My name is David Morgan. I'm the member-at-large for our Professional Firefighters Union, Local Number 4576. On behalf of all of our members, some who are in attendance today, I want to use this time to express our gratitude for considering the funding for a cancer screening for the upcoming budget year. Due to the tremendous amount of carcinogens we're exposed to, cancer is the leading cause of death for firefighters. I myself am just one of a handful of other New Hanover County firefighters that have been diagnosed with some form of cancer. Luckily, I stand before you all as a testament to how important early detection is. I was fortunate enough to catch mine early, that it could be removed, and so far, all of my scans have been clear. Unfortunately, this is not always the case. We recently lost one of our brothers to occupational cancer in April. Captain Courtney Paget fought hard for three years before his illness took him from us, and he was only 45 years old. I bring up these examples to illustrate the fact that cancer isn't something that could happen to our members, it's something that is already happening today. By including cancer screenings in the budget, you're not only acknowledging the risks that our members face, but also taking proactive steps to ensure early detection, which can save lives. When our firefighters are healthy and well-supported, we can perform our duties more effectively, ensuring that our community remains safe and secure with the peace of mind that we can go home to our families at the end of our shift. Thank you all for your time, and we look forward to your continued support.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Hannah Hearn.
Hello, county commissioners.
Hello.
And hello, Dr. Faust, if you're still here. My name is Hannah Hearn, and I am a ten-year New Hanover County resident and a volunteer member with New Hanover for All. I also grew up going to public school in South Carolina and North Carolina, and I want to share some of my experiences today. As a Chinese-American adoptee who was an only child and raised by a single mother, I was a very shy kid who never spoke up in class and who was taught to always put others before myself, even if it meant it was detrimental to me, something I'm still working on today. But I clearly remember my teachers, my favorite bus driver and my favorite classroom assistant who pushed me to come out of my shell and who supported me when I didn't know how to ask for support. I remember my elementary school teachers who jumped at the opportunity anytime I had a creative idea and helped encourage me to share it. I remember my teaching assistant, Ms. Robinson, who would share her food with me in the cafeteria if she didn't think I got enough to eat that day. And I remember my bus driver, Mr. Hill, who helped me come out of my shell just on the bus ride home, and it was one of my favorite parts of school. Well, school life wasn't always easy for me. I know it would have been 10 times worse had I not had the adequate support that I needed. And to be honest, I don't think I would have made it through had it not been for these incredible educators and supporters. I constantly hear nowadays from friends who optimistically entered the public education system as teachers, including special ed teachers and teaching assistants, and who have ended up getting to a point where they haven't gone a single day without crying because they don't have the support that they need currently. And I always hear how much heart they still have for the profession, and it's devastating to them. We have the opportunity to show just how much we care about and are indebted to our public school teachers. They are superheroes when they shouldn't have to be, and I think we all know this. They are currently suffering for it, and that obviously has a residual effect on our students and on our entire community. And if you asked me how I would repay our teachers, I would say I don't know how to repay them. What they've done for us is invaluable. But we can do the bare minimum and save their positions. And we've heard different numbers, but I'm here to urge you all to only say yes and pass a budget if it fully funds the 280 positions that are at risk of getting cut. And I know we've said that pulling funds from the fund balance is only in cases of emergencies, but I don't know what is more of an emergency than this. Our public school system is in danger, and our teachers are in danger and our students are in danger, and if we keep going the way we are, I really worry for the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm gonna mess this one up. Peter Rowwitz.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Peter Rowwitz, and I live in New Hanover County, and I'm a proud member of the North Carolina Association of Educators. And I'm speaking here today in support of our educators in New Hanover County. The funding system for public schools in North Carolina is broken. The majority of the state legislature is defunding public education by giving our public funds to private schools. That's not your problem. The majority of our local school board members with their biblical worldview and Christian nationalist agenda is dismantling the New Hanover County schools by not offering a budget that will adequately staff our schools. Again, I know that's not your problem. As county commissioners, you have an opportunity to approve a budget that will help ensure that all of our children learn and thrive in our public schools. I'm talking about our children. Now, that's everyone's problem or concern. I'm asking you to pass a budget that includes all of the money that is needed to save all of the student-facing positions in our schools. And then, find a new and better way to work with the school board that ensures that we continue to take care of all of our children. Do the right thing. Do it for our children. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that's all the people that signed up. So is there a motion? I'm sorry. I am so sorry. Norman? That's my fault, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm here on behalf of Port City United, and I listened to a lot of the things some of the folks had to say, and pretty much we all have the same concern. Mr. Barfield, you made a comment on TV relating to why punish all for some others' mistakes. Mr. Zappel, my wife and I had the pleasure to speak with you, Zare Festival Day, if you remember that, and it was a pleasant conversation. Thank you. I'm gonna piggyback off the statements of a lot of them had said in here, especially Pastor Campbell. Through the media, the verbiage of some of your counselors, well, commissioners prejudice the mind of the citizens of New Hanover County to make them think that Port City United was a game. No, Port City United is not a game. And by the last name, Gaddison, my son was director of Port City United, who was a Cameron University graduate. My other son is an East Carolina graduate. I don't know if you remember the YMCA program that we had years ago from eight to 12. Well, I was a counselor there, and was to protect and get kids off the street. So I say to you, Port City United was nurturing the citizens of New Hanover County. It was something that they needed and still need. I know a lot of folks who are here who have benefited from Port City United. So I just ask, just take into consideration that let's not be so sensitive to if someone approaches us that we automatically constitute it as a threat. In your position, you should be more thick-skinned than that. So there's a young man that might be unemployed right now. Let's hope he has a job, but I just say, take in consideration. The same way I seen commissioners with their child in the Corvette look so nurturing and protected, and that's all Port City United want to do, is nurture the citizen of New Hanover County and protect just the lives of a lot of people who don't have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Does the board desire to adopt the budget?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the 2425 budget as recommended with the addition of a sustainability manager.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Got a couple of amendments I'd like to see before we move to any kind of vote on the entire budget. I'd like to go back in this meeting and address the non-county funding. Currently, the non-county funding committee's recommended funding is at $2.4 million, and the county manager's recommended amount is $1.6 million. The county manager's recommended amount is in the current budget. That's a difference of $852,000. In an attempt to reduce the amount of non-county funding to bring it closer to the recommended amount, you know, I sent to all of you a revised budget proposal last week, asking for consideration of a plan that would reduce the number of non-county agencies that would receive funding in the 2425 budget from 69 to 58, and make an addition to the economic development recommendations in the budget. And to make up the difference between last year's funding, $1.6 million, and revised recommendation of funding for this year's budget of $1.9 million, that would be the revised amount, I'm proposing we make additional cuts and raise revenue projections in other areas of the 2425 budget and not use any money from our existing fund balance. Three areas of our 2425 proposed budget that have been identified as possibilities for cuts and for increases in revenues to help close that gap for the non-county funding and the economic development increases that I mentioned. First, $100,000 reduction in the non-departmental expenditure line. This is a fund meant to support unanticipated grants that meet matching needs, that need matching needs. This item has not been utilized in recent fiscal years. Second place I would look is at $50,000. That would be a delay in carpeting replacement items in the facilities department budget that is considered not to be a priority. And the third place is to increase projected interest revenue by $250,000. This is all based on information we received last week about federal interest rates not being reduced. This would raise or make a fiscal impact of $400,000. The amount needed to meet the revised non-county agency recommendation is $353,000, and the amount needed for the revised economic development funding is $15,984, for a total of $369,538. The identified 2425 budget cuts and increased revenues that I just mentioned total $400,000. This amount will meet and exceed the needed amount of $369,000 with a surplus of $30,000 to fund the additional non-county agencies and economic development categories with no additional pressure on our fund balance. with no additional pressure on our fund balance. I say this all in the context that if we move forward with the budget as proposed, it'll mean a 34% decrease in all of the recommended non-county agencies. Again, a 34% decrease. I know it's easy to kind of let your mind drift to, well, these are numbers and statistics on a page. But in our case, the non-county agencies that we're talking about are a significant list and represent organizations that are doing a lot of the work that frankly, the county should be doing. Those would include the Carousel Center. Imagine for a minute, for those of you who know what the Carousel Center does, some of the most important work for those children who have been abused or have been a part of a miserable situation. Instead of being taken to the police department or the sheriff's department, this is no knock against our sheriff's department. But to bring them to a friendly place, to be able to tell their story once so they can get justice for what they're doing. Going with the budget we have here will mean a 34% decrease in the budget amount that the county has given them and has given them for years. That will have a real-life impact on dozens of children who will not have the opportunity to be able to use those services. Shift to another one, domestic violence. Budget has money that's in there right now as one of the non-county agencies to help fund them. A 34% decrease in their funding will have a direct impact on the citizens of our county, those women and men, but mainly women, who need those services. Now, we could have a longer conversation about why we're counting on outside agencies or nonprofits to do the work of protecting our children, protecting our women and our men. That's for another time. Right now, the plan that I have put together and am proposing will help all of those maintain a reasonable amount of funding. Let me quickly add, though, not doing this lightly, as I mentioned, 11 of those recommended for funding that our committee looked at would not be funded at all. Tried to use common sense way of last in, first out. I hate that. But right now, we're looking at a shortfall of $852,000. Instead, eliminated 11, then went through each one of the remaining, in this case, it'll be 58 different nonprofits, outside agencies, and cut their funding. Not by 34%, in most cases, by approximately $5,000 of what they had asked for or what had been recommended. This way, you'll show the county's support for these non-county agencies and allow them to continue to do the important work that they're doing here in our community. Also, on the economic development, I've asked for an increase in funding that was brought forward. We heard from two of those today. The Kukulor's Film Foundation are bringing them level with last year's funding to $28,000. And the Wilmington Symphony. Also heard from Ms. Scanlon about them, to bring them level with the funding that we gave last year. It would be to $20,000. Small increases allow them to continue the work that they described. It's very important. All those together, again, come back to approximately $390,000, $369,000, all of which we've gone back in, I have gone back into the budget and found those areas that we can make more efficiencies and realistic projections of increased revenues to cover all that. None of this would require us to go into our revenue stabilization fund. None of this would go back to our fund balance or any additional funding. It's all there. We have the money there to do it. I believe this is a common sense way to approach this. And again, to continue the support that this county has given for many decades to these organizations that are doing important and hard work within our community. So I'd like to advance that as a motion for an amendment to the current budget.
Is there a second? A new second? Okay. We still got a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Today, I cannot support the recommended budget by our county manager. Really, this board's budget. In my 16 years on this board, this is the most irresponsible budget I've seen presented. The first was the first budget I saw in 2008, 2009, that I didn't vote for either. In that year, our county commission wanted to spend money for bonds that were sent for community college in our schools and other things, but didn't want to pay its bills. That year, we did furloughs with county employees. We had a riff with reduction in force when we laid people off. We resigned departments, all because we had a board that didn't want to raise significant revenues or revenues needed to fund this organization. And the people suffered. We shuttered library hours, park hours, all in an attempt not to spend resources for our community. But the budget I see today is truly irresponsible of this board to even consider. Our county manager brought forth a recommended budget, tapping into some of the $300 million for our revenue stabilization fund, providing the right-sized funding for our public schools, providing the right-sized funding for our nonprofits. But we had commissioners on the board that says, no, that won't work. I think I know more than you. I want to see the big white book. I want to go line by line and figure out what needs to be taken out. Andrew then said, nickels and dimes won't get you here. Well, Commissioner Skles, I'm still waiting on you to show me your recommendation from the big white book. You know, my expectation when I spoke in that meeting was that you would go and work with Commissioners Apple, bring back to our board a recommendation of what you saw fit, and make that recommendation to the five of us. That never happened. You know, you were appointed to this board, not elected. And my expectation for you and all of us is that we understand our role and responsibility and execute those fully. There's a way to get that knowledge that's needed. It's by going to the USC School of Government, the same thing that Commissioner Ted Davidson and I did several years ago. They offered a two-day in-depth class on how you read a county budget, how you set up a budget and your finances. And I found it most helpful in understanding this process. I've taken so many classes at the School of Government because I really want to understand my role as a county commissioner because you don't get imputed knowledge by just getting elected. You don't get the knowledge you need just by taking over of office. You've got to go somewhere beyond where you are to understand this process. And there's no one on this day that will know more than the county manager and the chief financial officer about how to put together a budget and a budget officer. Not one of us has that expertise. But instead, we pretended that we do by saying, I want to see the big white book and go line by line and figure out what I think is important for the rest of our community. To me, it's irresponsible. You know, I've heard commissioners in the past keep hounding the school board about, go to your fund balance, use your extra dollars. Go to your fund balance, use your extra dollars. We'll be there to support you. Reality is, we're not there to support you. You know, the school board, they spent their extra dollars. Maybe not the way that we wanted them to, but they did what we asked them to do. They tapped into their fund balance. They did what we asked them to do. And now we're saying, well, you didn't do it right. You know, to me, as a product of the school system here, as my dad was, to me, it's important that we fund our schools adequately. And it's not like we don't have the money. We are the third wealthiest county, as we stated, in the state of North Carolina. We have the resources. We have $300 million sitting in the bank. I'm one of the ones that I proudly say that voted to sell the hospital to make sure there are resources in our community. We have $300 million sitting right there that could be used today to help our public schools, to help fund Port City United, to help fund the nonprofits in our community. But still, yet, we're sitting on our purses. We're sitting on our pocketbook and saying, it's our money. I can tell you where your heart is when you're showing your checkbook where you spend our money on what's important to us. I can tell you where your heart is if you take out your checkbook register right now. Let me see it. I can tell you because you spend your money on what's important to you. So what I'm hearing is that public education is not important. What I'm understanding is that the black and brown communities in our community are not important when it comes to PCU being serviced and helping these young boys and girls get the help that they need. What I'm understanding is that nonprofits in our community are not important because we're not wanting to open up our checkbook and fund those organizations. At the same time, we have a commissioner that wanted to give our community college president a $43,000 raise and a $25,000 bonus when our own employees only getting a 3.8% raise. I don't understand that. Someone, please help me understand it like I'm a six-year-old. How you can give someone a $43,000 raise and a $25,000 bonus when your own manager's not making anywhere near that and your own employees aren't seeing the same type of an increase? It is irresponsible. I've been doing this for a long time. You know, the best advice I got from my father when I felt myself and Jason Thompson first got elected to this board and we're talking about who should be vice chair of the board. As my dad was a 12-year county commissioner, he said, "Son, neither one of y'all are qualified to be vice chair. You need to sit back and learn something first." As I'm talking with Jason, he and I are great friends. We met at Salt Works and we're talking through things. I said, "Well, Jason, my folks say I should be vice chair because I got the most votes." And they were, "JB, my folks say I should be vice chair because I've been on city council for long." But my dad's advice rung so true. He said, "Son, sit back and learn something first." So when I became chairman in 2011 after three years on the board, I didn't have to stumble through the agenda, stumble through public hearing process. I knew the language illegal because I sat back and I listened and learned. But I also took every class that I could take at the School of Government to understand the role as a county commissioner because, again, there's no imputed knowledge here. What one knows, the others don't know until you actually go in and invest in getting that knowledge. So the look at this budget, to me, is totally irresponsible because, as I mentioned before at our first budget work, the manager kept pushing back. And I kept saying, "This is our budget." So instead of our board giving him input in what we thought should be cut, the manager had a deadline. So he had to put together some things himself to figure out exactly, how do I make this work? Folks said, "I want to see the big white book." Never opened up the big white book and made a recommendation to me or the commissioners on this board. They have. I haven't heard them. So for me, it's irresponsible for someone to sit back and not understand the process. And then the man cuts. So I happened to walk into the manager's first budget meeting with his staff. Something that we normally don't walk into, but I just happened to be in the building that day and I hurried him to the staff here. I need you all to really look at your budgets and find ways to reduce your spending. Recognizing that we're already leaning mean to the bone at that particular point. And now to come back to the departments and ask for that second cut, to me, is again irresponsible. We're cutting things like IT at a time when artificial intelligence is at its height. We're cutting departments like PCU that's out here saving lives in our community. We're cutting what some folks call FAD. Some folks refer to as FAD. If you've ever been on a boat that's capsized, you're sitting there floating on cooler. You haven't been saved for two or three days. It's the fat that saves. Fat is what your body eats to maintain itself so that you don't die. It's the fat that maintains that life for you. For our community, my concerns are things like hurricanes. Because I've watched other counties around us who didn't have the wealth that we did when Hurricane Florence came. We had economies like Pender County that were hemming and hawing because they didn't have the money to go pick up storm debris. We already had contracts deployed and had people already in place prior to the hurricane hitting our community to go out and pick up storm debris because we had the resources. When Brunswick County struggled and had piles of debris everywhere. But because we planned properly, had the right resources in place, we were able to take care of our citizens. It takes foresight in not using political votes and whatnot to further your agenda. The agenda should be that of the benefit of our people. You know, as we talk about our public schools, you know, we have this status that we can get into X, Y, and Z to the schools. We're challenging Dr. Faust. What is that man going to say when he gets up here? You think he's going to disagree with what our commissioners are saying because they need the money that we have? Of course, our money is their money, but they're representing our school and our students here. It's our responsibility to provide the resources that they need. So again, I say that a budget that we are going to vote on today is not the manager's budget. It's the board's budget. It's the board agreeing to the cuts that are being made, and to me, is totally irresponsible. Again, I have the most experience on this board with anyone up here, any of us. I think budget. I've chaired this board on four separate occasions, been vice chair on three separate occasions. I've done the work. I've put in the time. I understand this role and this responsibility to our citizens in our community. The fact that our nonprofits do so many great things for our community, they should be funded as well. Groups like Genesis Blocks to get the resources that's needed to continue to educate those that are starting small businesses, things that I wish I would have had way back in the day. So again, Mr. Manager, Chairman of my board, I cannot vote for this irresponsible budget. I may have future comments depending on what I hear.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to echo some of Commissioner Barfield's comments, but also to put in context for some of those who are listening and who are here in the audience. $300 million that we have as a revenue stabilization fund is available because of your money. Not our money. It's your money. Only way that it can be tapped into, we have a supermajority vote. Takes four commissioners to tap into that. We have done that in the past, indeed, in this year's budget. We are using some of that revenue stabilization fund, the principle of it. It's an important thing to remember as we move forward with this vote. In discussions we've had, it became clear that we did not have four votes to be able to tap into that. Commissioner Barfield is absolutely correct. Original discussions, we had money for everything that we're talking about. Only if we tapped into that revenue stabilization fund the same way that we do this year. It was clear that we did not have four votes to do it. As part of the job that I do, I tried to find a compromise, which is what I spoke to and brought the motion forward seven, 10 minutes ago. Try to find a way so that we didn't throw everything overboard. You heard what happened. It wasn't a second. We have the money. It's your money. We're trying to put it to work to support this community. Budget, the way it's set now, is going to do some harm throughout our community because of the funding that's not there. I cannot support the budget moving forward the way it's been presented. However, I will make a substitute motion to table this discussion, further communications, and further discussion among this board. You do not need to deliver a budget until June 30th. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that substitute motion.
We've already got one motion on the floor.
He's making a substitute.
The substitute motion is allowed to jump ahead.
Okay.
And that can be addressed.
If it has a second.
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, I don't hear a second. And I made a motion about 20 minutes ago to pass the presented budget by the manager and staff for the 2024 year with the addition of the sustainability position. Not an additional position, but the position is taken from another position and renamed. And it was also seconded.
Mr. Chair, I need to make a clarification. This is not the manager's recommended budget. This is the budget that he put together based on dialogue from this board. He gave a recommended budget a month or so ago that has been refined, reworked, refined, and reworked. But this is a budget coming from the board of commissioners, not the manager's recommended budget. I've done this 16 times now. This is not the manager's recommended budget.
Mr. Chair, I still have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, and I'd like to have a vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 14-234.3, which prohibits public officials who also serve as directors, officers, or governing board members for nonprofits from participating in making or administering any contracts with those nonprofits. When a governing body consists, when a governing body considers a contract with a when a governing body considers a contract with a nonprofit, including any award of money, board members involved with that nonprofit must recuse themselves from any deliberation and record their recusal with the clerk. This recusal process for the fiscal year two thousand and four, two thousand and five recommended budget meets the governing board member's duties to vote and recusal procedure requirements. The recusal vote will excuse each board member from deliberation and voting on appropriations and expenditures for the non-county and economic development agencies due to a conflict of interest. It specifically excuses Chair Robin Bort from the Cape Fear Council of Governments, Greater Wilmington Chamber of Commerce, Wilmington Business Development, and Wilmington Regional Film Commission. Commissioner Barfield from the Blue Ribbon Commission Prevention of Youth Violence and Greater Wilmington Youth Initiative. Commissioner Scalise from the Southeastern Economic Development Commission, the Southeastern Partnership Incorporated, Wilmington Downtown, Inc., and Commissioners Zapple from Leading Into New Communities and Thayin Hall Center for the Performing Arts. Is there a motion and a second for a recusal vote?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Okay, a vote is needed to appropriate and administer a contract for individual non-county economic development based on the finding that the appropriations and expenditures will increase the population, taxable property, agricultural industries, employment, industrial output, or business prospects of the county and social impact agencies. The board must take a separate vote for each agency. Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Cape Fear Council of Governments?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's a two-two vote. I can't vote on that. Okay, that's three-two. Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Greater Wilmington Chamber of Commerce?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Wilmington Business Development?
So moved.
Second. All, I'm asking for a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's still two votes.
Mr. Chairman, when this person does not speak, is overt any affirmative thing we've talked about before. If I don't say anything, is a vote in.
Okay.
That's correct.
Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Wilmington Regional Film Commission?
So moved.
All.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Blue Ribbon Commission Prevention of Youth Violence?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Greater Wilmington Youth Initiative?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with the Southeastern Economic Development Commission?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with, let's see, that was it. Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Wilmington Downtown, Inc.?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Leading Into New Communities?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Thayin Hall Center for the Performing Arts?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I believe that there is a typographical error that's included. The Southeastern Economic Development Commission is listed twice. The second entry should be the Southeastern Partnership Incorporated.
Okay. Let's do that one again then. Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Southeastern Economic Partnership?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion and a second exclusive of the appropriations voted for non-county economic development and economic incentives, appropriations recusing commissioners with conflicts of interest to adopt fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five budget ordinance?
So moved.
Inclusive of the capital projects and opioid expenditures, all members may vote on this motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Can that vote be rejected, please?
On the budget, the last motion you read? Who, I had Commissioner Scalise moving it, Vice Chair Pierce is seconding it?
And I voted for it.
Okay.
I think all of us voted for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Got to take care of that. Anything else I need to do on that? Number sixteen is a text amendment request, TA.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a five-minute recess?
Sure. Five-minute recess.
Bring this meeting back to order. I'd like to recor- recognize Jordan Smith, New Hanover County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the recess, I was conferring with the clerk. Just wanted to confirm after the board voted- Through that rubric of individual votes to approve appropriations to non-county agencies and economic appropriations, there was a final vote, kind of fully adopting and implementing your budget ordinance for the upcoming fiscal year. Based on some earlier discussion, we believe that the will of the board was to have three affirmative votes on that matter, that being the Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Commissioner Scalise, and two negative votes on that ultimate vote, being Commissioner Barfield and Commissioner Zapple. And I believe the clerk is prepared to have the minutes reflect that if that was in fact the will of the board.
That's correct.
Right, Rob?
Jordan, I'm sorry, I was distracted for a second while you were speaking. Unbelievable.
He was just saying that you voted against it.
Against the overall budget.
Yes, Commissioners Apple, I believe the-
That's all good, yep. Overall budget, yeah.
Okay, is that, is that good?
Works for me and Madam Clerk.
Good, okay. Okay, next is a public hearing. Text amendment request, TA 23-03, request by New Hanover County Planning and Land Use to amend Articles Two and Five of the Unified Development Ordinance to incorporate standards for electric vehicle charging stations. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board.
Excuse me just one second. I, I need to, this is a public hearing, we will hear the presentation from staff, then any supporters or opponents will each be allowed fifteen minutes of their presentation, an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. This amendment is a staff-led initiative stemming from a management directive to the Planning Department in 2022, brought on by recent legislation on both the federal and state level regarding electric vehicle goals. In addition, it dovetails with the county's efforts to proactively address the future needs of residents through planned growth and development. This amendment was originally presented to the Board of Commissioners at their January 8, 2024, meeting. At that meeting, the board voted to table the amendment to this meeting, instructing staff to work with stakeholders to revise the amendment. This presentation will recap the intent and structure of the text amendment, and then review the changes that have been made in the interim. Staff took several things into account when drafting this amendment, including the most common locations where EV drivers will charge their vehicles, the current and likely future distribution of charging stations, how these stations will impact site design, and the cost of installation on developers. The idea is for the ordinance to provide an easy and cost-effective way for property owners to build the infrastructure early so they have more options in the future if they or future owners decide they would like to install the charging assembly equipment. As staff, we understand the market is changing, and there may even be uncertainty about how many charging stations will be necessary in a future market. But this amendment is intended to help position property and business owners to lower their costs later by building infrastructure today. As a reminder, the draft amendment focuses on three core areas: expansion and addition of definitions, minimum off-street parking standards for EV spaces, and accessibility of future EV parking spaces. The draft amendment only requires for conduit to be laid, not for full installation of a charging station. This is a graphic depicting the difference between an EV-capable space and what a space would look like when fully equipped with an EV charging station. Since January, staff have made a few revisions to the draft amendment. Firstly, staff changed the terminology in the amendment from EV-ready parking space to EV-capable parking space to match industry standards. From discussions with stakeholders in the interim, staff added language to allow EV charging stations in required transitional buffers in street yards. The intent of this is to remove barriers to retrofitting sites should the owner or developer wish to do so. Lastly, staff added language to exempt multifamily development that provides 100% affordable housing. This was the result of discussions between staff and developers of affordable housing projects. The City of Wilmington also introduced this exemption in the latest update to their text amendment in their land development code. The City of Wilmington's requirements are not apples-to-apples-to-ours. After any discussion and pending a vote from the board, this item will be adopted into the Unified Development Ordinance. This concludes staff's presentation, and again, I'm available for any questions.
You got anything, Rob? Anybody? Thank you, sir. Is anyone else who wants to speak? Okay, in that case, we'll close the public hearing. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, my position remains the same as what I spoke about in January. I'm a big fan of electric vehicles. I'd like to have one someday, but I do not think the government should be in the business compelling this kind of infrastructure. This sort of change should be driven by the private sector, not the government. I've explained this more at length in an article I wrote during our prior hearing. I don't think that it's necessary to rehash it. The private sector should drive this, not the government. This text amendment should be denied. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. I'd like to remind everyone that this particular change has been so watered down. Not quite being meaningless, but is not impactful, other than the cost of pieces of concrete and some thinking, in other words, planning that would go ahead. This does not force anybody to put in an electric vehicle, vehicle, charging station. This does not put any excessive burden on a builder, a developer, or an owner of anything. This is just straight-ahead planning. Yes, we'll put some conduit in the ground or in the wall as we move ahead. It's not burdensome. This is just good planning on the part of our Planning and Zoning Department. Thank you. I feel your pain in the department of having to go at this so many times. Something that is such a common sense, forward-thinking, so that when there is a demand from people at your building that you own for it, you don't have to rip up the parking lot as we will be doing at our own brand-new government center, the cost of tens of thousands of dollars to retrofit the same conduit that if we're talking about here, if it had been installed, we would have been able to simply slip the wires through and then purchase the equipment. That's all this is doing. So I support it. Again, I, I'm sorry that it's as simple as this is. I just wanted to make those comments. I'm in support of forward-thinking on the part of our county. It's the job we're supposed to be doing.
Chairman, I'm sure with Commissioners Apple, I mean, this is a win-win if we partner with our development community, other stakeholders who have a bigger conversation. This is what came from that bigger conversation. Folks and Bakes and others that came to the table to make the recommendations that were heard encapsulated in this new ordinance. Full support. I would assume that the entire board would be as well. As we know, the cost of retrofitting is enormous. Look over at Mayfair, the fact that they've got several EV charging stations in their parking lot, but I'm sure they had to tear their parking lot up to go in and out to actually put the structure in place, so I would indeed support this new amendment.
Just my, I'm sorry. Just my thoughts. I do certainly think it should be a suggestion, but not a requirement. I, I think a lot of times we tend to put too much regulation on things like that. If a developer is, is not smart enough to think that it's something that he should do on his own, then it's not our concern if he has to pay more money, like we do now, to tear up the concrete and put it in. We don't know really what it will be in ten years from now. So just for those reasons, I mean, I would rather it be the suggestion of our planning board, not the regulation.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I move we deny the text amendment.
Let me ask something real quick, if you don't mind. All we're doing is just installing a piece of PVC or something like that, and that's, and we don't pay for it?
That's right. And allowing them to put, and allowing them to put it in multiple different locations, so it's not locked in.
Have they got to do it?
If, moving forward when you are developing, it's not retrofitting, well, let's hear it from the expert. Zach, give us the good word.
So it, per the amendment, it would only be required in developments that started, when a development requires twenty-five or more parking spaces, it triggers the requirement, as the draft amendment reads, and the spaces that have to be EV-capable with conduit laid to them caps at fifteen.
But this is just apartment complexes.
No, sir. It's, it's commercial uses as well, multifamily dwellings and parking areas like a parking deck.
And for new construction only, moving forward?
Yes, sir. This does not apply to retroactive sites.
Anything with more than twenty-five parking places.
Yes, ma'am, except for single-family homes, which we don't measure the same parking spaces.
So, single-family homes don't have to have it?
Yes, sir. That is outlined in the amendment, is that single-family homes are exempt from this requirement.
So everybody's got to have it.
Any commercial use in our table, yes, sir.
A restaurant that has twenty-five parking places.
Yes, ma'am.
So, just because it doesn't cost us, the government, or the taxpayer money, doesn't mean it doesn't cost the person building the project more money to do it. I, I, I still think it should not be a regulation. It should be a healthy suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, just as a, for instance, one of the situations that I'm concerned about in connection with compelling all of these commercial uses is that if, if you have a business that's got no, nothing but trucks, their whole working population, people with gasoline trucks, diesel trucks, they're going to be compelled under this certain number of EV space, EV-ready spaces in. And again, it seems to me that the correct course is not to tell people, "Don't do this." They should be encouraged to do it, but to make them do it whenever there isn't a one-size-fits-all situation, doesn't seem like proper use of the government's authority, I think that we should leave this to the private sector.
Hmm. All of those, Commissioner Scalise, in your theoretical forward-thinking, all those diesel trucks could very well, within the next ten years, be electric trucks. So it would not be money thrown away, and again, the amount of money we're talking about is the cost of a few pieces of open, not filled, but open conduit. As our Chair just said, PVC, yeah. Aluminum, yeah. It could be that. All we're asking is that you think ahead so that you don't have to retrofit at ten times the amount it would take to do this. This is not an onerous situation, and as Commissioner Barfield pointed out, we had the input of, you know, every major developer has weighed in on this and said, "Yeah, we can live with this." That's what the work that our Planning Department has done since we last brought this up. Again, a common-sense UDO amendment.
You know, Mr. Chair, even in new homes now, developers got wise and ran conduit in walls to accommodate for surround sound systems, recognizing that people wanted to have surround sound systems, so why go and tear a hole in the wall to run a piece of wire where you can have a conduit there, that, that wire can easily slide in, go to a disappropriate place, and voila, you've got surround sound setup. It's just being forward-thinking. And when it comes to trucks, if you follow the news headlines with many car manufacturers, they've actually shut down manufacturing truck facilities for engines and making electric trucks. That is where things are going. It's almost like when I used to run a DJ business, and they came out and said, "Well, CDs are the new thing," and thinking, "No, we'll never get rid of LP, you know, vinyl albums." And guess what happened? Vinyl went away. CDs came in, and now you have stuff that's actually on a device you can't even get CDs anymore as well, as time has changed. Right now, what we're dealing with now is artificial intelligence. I mean, this world is ever-changing. We need to be ahead of this game as opposed to always being behind.
Where are we at?
I made a motion to deny the text amendment. I don't know that there was a second, though.
Second.
I'll make a motion, a substitute motion, to approve the amendment.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chair, chomping in, either motion to approve or deny needs to have some reference to the-
Effect on the comprehensive plan and its consistency with that plan.
Thank you, Jordan. Jump in anytime.
So, in the substitute motion I'll make, I move to approve the proposed amendment to the New Hanover County Unified Development Ordinance to provide for new standards for EV parking standards. I find it to be consistent with the purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan because it provides up-to-date tools that promote business success and promotes environmentally responsible growth. I also find approval of the proposed amendment reasonable and in the public interest because it provides for clear and effective ordinance standards. Does that satisfy your concerns?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to vote for that one. Sorry, guys.
No.
Mine was a no, by the way.
I, I, based on our, our building, you know, what, if we do it, what it's going to cost us to do it? It just, it just makes sense to me, but I still don't like to tell people they got to do it.
So, to be clear, is that a three-two in favor, or?
Yes.
It is. Oh, you can go with this, sir. So the, so the amendment passes?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Consideration of Workforce Housing Services Program Request for Proposals for Fiscal Year 2025, Mr. Theo McLamie.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Today, I am here to present the Draft Workforce Housing Services Program Criteria and Priorities for Your Feedback. This is the third year of your five-year commitment to invest fifteen million toward workforce housing. This investment is, in addition to other resources, the county is investing in workforce housing through infrastructure, non-county agency funding, and the donation of lots through our property conveyance policy. As with last year, to determine the community needs at this time, we have developed a request for proposals that will, that will be finalized based on the feedback we received today. This framework, framework has been developed based on the county's strategic plan, excuse me, strategic priorities, the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee Strategic Plan, and recommendations from their annual housing, housing report, as well as the updated housing needs assessment. One of the housing needs assessments' key findings is an estimated overall housing gap of twelve thousand rental units and a gap of almost seventeen thousand for, for-sale units within the county from 2022 through 2032. This data represents increases in housing gaps over the past two years, with the rental housing gap increasing by nearly thirteen percent and the for-sale housing gap increasing by nearly thirty percent. Additionally, the North Carolina Housing Coalition provides an annual snapshot of housing needs for each of North Carolina's one hundred counties. The 24 Report found that thirty-five percent of New Hanover County families are cost-burdened, meaning these families are spending more than thirty percent of their income on rent and utilities. Likewise, twenty-three percent of the county's homeownership households are cost-burdened. At this point, I want to update you on the status of your previous allocations. Almost six million has been allocated to six projects and are helping four hundred and twenty-six households. Australia Landing, eighty-four units are scheduled to open this summer. Covenant Senior Housing, twenty of their sixty-eight units will be available this fall. Residence at Canopy Point, seventy-two units will open this summer. And Habitat's Haven Place, thirty-five new homes have started construction. In addition to these construction projects, Warm in Sea Home Repair Program is improving housing conditions for forty families. And New Beginnings Christian Church Rental Assistance Program is increasing access- Program is increasing access to housing for one hundred and twenty-seven families. The next round of funding is intended to address our housing needs by increasing affordable and workforce housing stock, retaining affordable housing stock, and increasing access to affordable housing. Nonprofit, for-profit, and agencies would be invited to submit proposals for funding. The manager's budget recommends American Rescue Plan funding for this year. Planning and land use and finance have collaborated to provide an impact analysis. That analysis is included in your packet. The ARP funding timeline requirement is that funds must be allocated by December of this year and projects completed with funds dispersed by December twenty-six, December of 2026. Similar to previous years, this timeline is consistent with the county's focus on shovel readiness and speed to market of affordable units. Staff will work closely with applicants to verify capacity to meet these deadlines. Because of ARP funds, we've added land acquisition as an eligible activity to the previous list of onsite infrastructure such as water and sewer, construction or rehab of, of affordable single-family or multifamily housing units that are for sale or for rent, emergency repair of single-family units for income-eligible clients, down payment assistance, and tenant-based rental assistance. A minimum twenty-year commitment to affordability is required. ARP funds can support housing for families up to hundred twenty percent of the area median income. All activities must take place in New Hanover County. For construction projects, the appropriate zoning must be in place and the site must not be impacted by environmental problems. In addition, staff recommends continuing the stipulation that projects must have received technical review approval to be eligible for funding if applicable. Projects without TRC approval may not have completed the work necessary to determine full project cost and to avoid potential conflicts between funding allocations and county review requirements. Based on the housing needs assessment, the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee Strategic Plan, and with your input, we are recommending continuing a strong preference on immediate impact projects that can quickly speed units to market, shovel-ready and/or operational by July of 2025. Projects that provide housing at a variety of price points, housing projects that leverage diverse funding sources and accept housing choice vouchers. Projects shall be evaluated through point-based scoring of financial feasibility, development and management team, and development quality. The overall timeline is July through October, the same as previous years. A cross-functional team of county staff, along with the members of the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee, will evaluate proposals for eligibility and completeness. Two virtual information sessions would take place later this month. The requests for proposals would be open July eighth through August fifth. We propose adding interviews with applicants after the submission deadline to determine the funding structure required by the proposal to ensure it meets the needs of the recipients. This timeline aligns with the ARP deadline to complete contracting and allocations by the end of December. Moving forward with your feedback and recommendations, staff will finalize the RFP and evaluation criteria. We will develop a public notification plan in coordination with Communications Office. This concludes my presentation. I, along with Rebecca Roth, our Planning and Land Use Director, are available for your questions and feedback. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present to you this morning.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So I assume that based on one of the qualifications, having gone through the TRC, the Realtors Project will probably not get funded until they're further down the road. You know, see, that's probably the only thing I've heard of that's not going down that process yet.
And we've had discussions regarding that.
Yes. So we have outlined in the proposal that there are two types of projects that hadn't been considered in previous years, the land acquisition and some of the off-site infrastructure not requiring the TRC approval. So if the Realtors were to apply under those conditions, as long as the off-site improvements would be to benefit their project and not other market rate projects in the area, and they can meet those eligibility requirements related to the twenty-year affordability component, then they would be eligible to apply. You're correct. If they wanted funding for onsite improvements, then they would need to apply for a TRC and get those approvals in place in order to receive funding this round.
I would say that the program we put in place, overall, to me, is working. I was talking with a senior citizen that I know that's moved into Australia Landing, and her income qualified her for the thirty percent AMI. She has a one-bedroom, brand-new apartment for three-thirty-five a month. That doesn't happen without the county stepping in, you know, and helping these developers. And this is maybe the third project that we've approved for that particular developer in our community since I've been on the board. And to see that amount of affordable units going to the marketplace here at a time when it's definitely needed. I know the senior housing is, is at a premium in terms of folks trying to find affordable senior housing, as most of those places have at least a year waiting list to get in. So you're almost hoping that someone dies to be able to move in, in some place, basically. So for us to find ways to increase that housing stock, to me, is important. I'm challenged with the fact that, you know, we're twenty-five, you know, thousand units behind, when in my mind, we don't have enough space in our county, you know, land-wise, to put all those units. So I know we have the thing outside the box about regionalism when it comes to working with, you know, surrounding counties. I know Columbus County is experiencing somewhat of a boom, and they're trying to figure out the logistics of all that now as they don't have water, sewer, infrastructure in place. But things are growing from the Myrtle Beach side, they're growing from our side, going to Columbus County, as people are going further and further away to build a affordable home, you know, and driving into Wilmington, you know, doing D work. So we do have a challenge before us. But I appreciate you all's efforts and the great work you're doing to, you know, bridge that gap, so to speak, and provide ways so we can increase our affordable housing stock in our community. Much appreciated.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Rebecca, Theo, I just wanted to say, you know, how proud I am of the work that, and the entire county, this board is, of the work you've done with this idea. Remember, it just came as an idea three years ago, actually, three and a half years ago. Need to put this money aside. And to see it working is just wonderful. And piggybacking a little bit on the comments Mr. Barfield just made, I can't wait for Starway Apartments, another project that has been partially funded with this money to come onboard with, I believe it's two hundred and seventy-eight apartments, you know, right there in midtown off Carolina Beach Road, near Shipyard. It's, it's just wonderful. This is exactly what we envisioned, to have the impact. I know the pressures put on you as we literally built this airplane while we were flying it to make sure it has happened. And it's only because of your attention to detail and just keeping forward focus that we've been able to get this far. You've done beautiful work. It's the kind of stuff that you never get credit for. I'm just trying here for a few moments to put that spotlight on you and say, thank you. You're doing wonderful work. Greatly appreciated.
You can take a bow now.
Thank you. We are working with our community partners, our private sector partners, and we emphasize partnerships. And that certainly is the guiding principle that it's helping us to be successful. So thank you.
Does anyone, thank you. We need a recommended motion to approve?
Is that just an update? I don't know. Is there, I don't think we need a, there's no action required on this. There is action, you're saying, Kim?
I think that the action is to send out for RFPs.
Yeah, so based on any feedback you might have, we would take that into account when finalizing the RFP.
Did you get enough feedback?
I believe so.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve the Workforce Housing Services Program Request for Proposals for Fiscal Year 2025.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we move to committee appointments. Airley Gardens Foundation's Board of Directors.
Mr. Chair, move that we reappoint Shane Johnson, Sandra Ray, and appoint Beverly Erwin Stamatostoffo.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees.
Mr. Chair, I move that we reappoint Robert Collins.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Cape Fear Museum Advisory Board.
Mr. Chair, I move that we reappoint Stephen Fort Lewis and appoint Timothy Pennick.
Mr. Chair, I, uh, move we reappoint Stephen Fort Lewis and Charles Pennington.
Can we take them one by one then? Okay.
Yeah, we can, perhaps if it's easier, do you want to address what we, we appear to have agreement, the reappointment of Mr. Stephen Fort Lewis?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I, again, move first for Mr. Timothy Pennick.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New Hanover County ABC Board.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion we reappoint Bruce Shell to that position.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I need you to appoint the chair for the ensuing year on the ABC Board. I need you to appoint the chair for the ABC Board for the ensuing year.
Now?
Yes, it's in your...
Yeah, the, um, the new chair is Angie Barr, B-A-R-R.
Is the, is the board in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes.
We haven't voted on it yet, have we?
No, sir.
We haven't voted on it, but that's who the board has decided is going to be the chair.
The board decided, or three members decided?
The board.
I hadn't voted yet. I hadn't been, been asked the question.
Saying the board, ABC Board asked that she be the chair.
The Commissioners need to appoint and vote on that, please, sir.
So who's, who's the chair?
Angie Barr.
I'm happy to, Mr. Chair, in light of the letter received, make motion that Angie Barr be appointed as the board chair for the upcoming year.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. New Hanover County Airport Authority.
Mr. Chair?
I'll make a motion we reappoint Nick Rose to that position.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New Hanover County City of Wilmington Workforce Housing Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chair, I'd nominate Jody Wainio.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New Hanover County Cooperative Extension Advisory Council. Four vacancies and three people. We just need to decide which one's one unexpired year, is one unexpired and three unexpired. Anybody got any thoughts on that?
Mr. Chair, move that we appoint Pamela Carr to the unexpired, to the first term expiring twelve-one, two thousand twenty-four, Nancy Jessica Gray and Carla Hendricks to the terms expiring twelve-one.
Second.
Mr. Chair, we, we have three unexpired.
Oh, my, my, thank you, sir.
So we got four vacancies, so why don't us put off three and then one?
Yes, sir. That's a better suggestion. I remove my motion.
Okay. What's, what's the motion?
The motion would be that all three applicants are appointed to terms that expire on twelve-one twenty-six.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're still advertising for, for one more?
Yes, sir.
So it will be the one year?
They'll expire on twelve-one twenty-four if we get an application in time?
New Hanover County Non-County Agency Funding Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Gail Edding, Edding, and Claire Killy, Killy. I'd like to re-advertise the business.
Second.
It appears that we have a individual who's qualified from the business community, John Hennett, so I would nominate John, John Hennett in the business vacancy.
And Gail?
Yes, I, I join in the other recommendations of Mr. Barfield, but I would also nominate John Hennett for the business rather than to send it up for, for us.
So can we do it one by one then?
Gail Edding.
For the senior elder position?
Yes.
Second.
We all in agree on that?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that one's done. Claire Killy, Cultural Recreation.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. John Hennett, Business.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. New Hanover County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Two vacancies.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we appoint Carol Hunter and Jordan Nason to the two positions.
Jordan Nason. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. Hold on, before we vote, I want to nominate Carol Hunter and Amanda Hoffman.
Should we do those?
Okay, we'll do them, we'll do them separately. Carol Hunter, already got it.
All right. So I'll make a motion to reappoint Carol Hunter to one of the vacant positions.
All in favor, say, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, we're, we're...
We're vacant for Carol Hunter's second.
Well, I'm, I have a difference on the second person.
Yes.
Okay.
Carol Hunter.
Okay, and, and, um...
And then I'll make the motion to appoint Jordan Nason to the second vacant position.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that three?
Yeah. Okay. New Hanover County Tourism Development Authority.
Now, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make this motion, since it's been open for about two years now, to welcome Dan Collins and motion for him to be the Curry Beach Hotel Owner Representative for the TD Ag.
Okay. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Parks Conservancy of New Hanover County Board of Directors.
Mr. Chair?
We need six, and we got three.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to nominate Cassidy Santa Guida, Hillary Stevens, Stevens, and Suzanne Werner, and, um, I am confused by the note here. It says...
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Zappel, so are you wanting to reappoint Cassidy and Suzanne to serve their second terms for three years?
That's right.
Okay. In which term would you like Ms. Stevens to serve?
Uh, full term, if that's available.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, that brings us to a close.
Yes, sir.
Anything? Jordan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
And we got one more, one more little to do this year if they're still here. Anthony Brum. I think they left.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Eric Creedle, would you mind standing, please? I'm sorry that you had to spend your birthday this way, but would you all join with me and sing a happy birthday to Eric, please? On the count of three. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Eric. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday. To the best CFO this side of heaven. Some in heaven a little greater, but on this side of heaven, you're it.
I have a question for the manager. Why doesn't he have the day off? It's the most important day of the year for him, and they had to do our budget today.
Poor planning on our part.
Give him the rest of the day off.
All right. There's nothing else. This meeting's over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.